To the June thirteenth Winchester Planning Board meeting. We do have a call. And so. Let me do a roll call out. So everyone is here, uh, Carrie.
President.
Uh, each in. Um, Nick Rosettos.
President.
Uh, Sally Dale.
Present.
And the of Jerry sign here is present. That's five, right? Yep. Uh, we are joined tonight with by our. Assistant Town Engineer Brian Mantar, our Recording Secretary. Nancy Pulcari. We are being recorded via Wind Cam. Thank you very much Wind Cam. And on Zoom Cloud, if you don't want to appear on the videos, please turn off your video and your audio. Um, as a protection against Zoom bombing, um. If you wish, I've turned off the ability for everyone to mute except for the board. Um, and Brian Manter and Nancy Pulcari, if you wish to speak, please raise your hand and um. We will get to as soon as we can. So let's go through our. Agenda tonight. Uh, we have our standard open meeting. We have a presentation at seven thirty on. A proposed redevelopment of nine ten Main Street. Uh, and then the rest of the evening will be um centered on planning board stuff, for instance. Uh, general outreach efforts, um, what we were doing this fall town meeting. Um, and then a deep dive into um the. MBTA Chapter forty eight, Section three A, multi the Emily zoning. Um, and I've got a lot of stuff to show you. It's not quite as coherent as I'd hoped. Um. But let's get to it. So um, a really brief update is um, so. There Sally and I have met with the um, our. Consultants for MBGA three A last week, and they are coming. They're in the final steps of putting the maps together. They put out a latest version over the weekend. I haven't had a chance to look at it. The previous versions were, I think, quite confusing. And so we want, once this goes public, this is our. We have to make sure it's correct, and I know that you've all been waiting for them. Um, so we will get that out as soon as we can. Um, Sally and I also met this morning with our North Main Street Consultants for them in place. And um, we had a good talk because they're going to be coming for this board next Tuesday. To move us on to um some of the next steps. And um, one of the things we talked about was um outreach, and so we can get that so that. We can describe their input on that um around eight o'clock. And then um. What else is going on? So I'd. A number of I've had some questions from that board members about what's happening with the housing production plan. Which is um, those those town had a five year housing product. I think it was five years, and that's going to be coming up. It'll be um expiring next spring. And I know the town moderate town moderator, the uh town manager Beth Rudolph has been um. Thinking about that, and she's applied for grant to help us to help the town. Um, I I will be speaking with her hopefully this week to understand what the planning board's role is in that. That's technically a. Select board initiative, but the planning board has a lot to do with it, so. Um. That's about all I have for updates. Um, oh, I did speak with town council about our dog grooming person. The person still wants to do dog grooming. Um, and so town council, one of the concerns I had was. Um. Should we use a special permit and say you can apply for a general business? A general services uh under a special permit in order to protect the board in case we decide to put in some other um. Or we we change how we define dog grooming, and he said, just go ahead with. General services. And don't worry about the special permit. So I will, I will let them know that they could just go ahead and apply for general services. Under the general services usage for CBD.
That's great, because I felt bad that that person's been waiting for an answer.
Yeah, yeah, and I was lucky to to run into town council at town hall yesterday, so that was that worked out.
Yes.
Anyway, so I'm done with my updates.
I have one.
Go ahead.
I have an update. So somehow I had the wisdom. To read the Metropolitan Area Planning Council upcoming events. In June, and there was a June sixth event that I bet that we can get by webinar, I mean by by video. It was hosted by the Eastern Massachusetts Historical Commission Coalition, and it was the subject was historic preservation and three A MBTA communities. So um, I don't know if anyone from Winchester attended that, but I would love to know.
I saw part of it. Uh, I saw about half an hour. Yeah, yeah, it was. It was interesting. Um, it was basically uh. Individuals from different towns uh kind of sharing their experience. With the process. Um, some of them had heritage districts um that uh. Kind of help protect uh their historic buildings throughout the process. Um. I didn't, I was not there for the whole thing, but I did. I did catch the beginning.
Yeah, no, it looked like it was a cool program. I just because we have some historic properties. Um, well, we have historic properties in the Center Business District, and we have historic properties in GBD two and three. And they're all coming into, um, well, at least GBD two and the Center Business District are coming into. Contact with the three A rules. So I thought this would be a good um. Video for us to review. Nick, do you know how to get? I guess I can ask the M A P C, right?
Yeah, I mean, I I signed up for it, uh, and they sent a link, but I don't know how to get it.
Is this, was this the Mass Housing Partnership series, or was this?
No, this is M A P C, and it was a webinar on historic preservation in three A communities.
Okay, well, it might be on the M A B S M A P C website, so.
All right. Well, so I'll go look for that. I just thought it was really interesting, and I'm glad you had a chance to check in on it. So that's the only. But frankly, I thought I was telling you about something that was coming up. But I'm not.
Um, and I just realized that I forgot to tell you, uh, the town planner search committee is meeting next Monday. Uh, on the federal holiday, but we will be meeting. Uh, we have. Three new um applications which have come in. So we will be discussing those next Monday.
Okay.
Um, okay, so uh, we have about three minutes before our first presentation. Any? Other.
One, one thing, Diab, that I know that we wanted to talk about was the meeting schedule going into the summer. I don't know if there's enough time between now and our next.
Yeah, I don't think.
Whatever.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Um, why don't we do that when we get to eight o'clock? Because we can.
Yes.
That would not be untoward.
Right.
Okay, um, so. Ah, so we have it in our pocket, and I will be displaying. Um, why don't we? Let me make sure that everyone is here. Actually, I don't know if I'm going to be. I mean, I have a hard time seeing people. Hold on one second. Participants, where are the participants? Are there? Okay, so um. Let's see, Anthony, I am assuming that is um.
Marino.
Covino.
Marino.
Marino.
He's here.
Yes, I. I'm going to make you a co-host so you can speak, and then Mike McKay.
Yes.
And make a co-host. And Anthony, is there someone else from your team who's here?
Just Mike McKay and myself.
Okay, so uh, do you want to drive the presentation, or do you want me to go through what you what you sent us?
No, I'd just like to say thank you for giving us the opportunity. Uh, I'm trying to put video on. How do I do this?
Uh.
Let's see, I've seen a lot of activity on the screen. I'm just trying to. Down. Turn on a a a picture so you can at least see me. Um, part video, maybe that's it. Okay, here we go. I apologize.
No problem. Did you want to 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 either? Um, do you want to um share your screens and and show your presentation?
Mike will do that.
Okay, so Mike, you are co-host, so you I will stop sharing, and you can go ahead and start sharing.
Okay.
Right, right. So I just wanted to say thank you. Uh, I I believe. We've created a a compelling and attractive redevelopment proposal. For nine ten Main Street at the corner of Canal Street. Uh, I'd like to say that I believe this project represents a great opportunity to set the tone. For quality redevelopment on the Upper Main Street corridor. Yeah. Redevelopment with sensitivity to historical resources combined with. Meeting the needs of multifamily and and uh. Either apartment or condominium units when available, when possible. And um, I think Mike has done a terrific job as usual. He's got a long. Storyed history of quality, multifamily. Luxury residential. Uh, mixed use projects in Greater Boston. He his his list goes on and on and on, so. I'm very fortunate to have him on our team. He leads this whole effort, and uh. I'm going to let Mike. You know, take it from there, but um any questions you have, I'm I'm here. Mike can answer probably all of them, and I'm here as well.
Great. Thank you, Anthony. That was uh, that was kind inflated, but uh, kind words. Michael McKay, I'm uh, I'm an architect. My office is in Dedham, Massachusetts. Anthony and I met um several years ago. Um. We both live in the same town, and we've done. Many projects together in the in the past uh few years. We uh. We recently, we have a project in the next town over in Lexington. It's a similar project to this, maybe a little bit larger. Has more of a mixed use component to it on Bedford Street, and it was really uh, it's been. About two years that we started working on this, and initially we were. Planning on taking down. The resource and uh. And now we've embraced it, and our our hope is to. Uh, pick it up, move it a little bit closer to the street and uh restore it completely, and we have some um, some pretty uh. Good images, and thanks uh to Sally for providing those to us. Uh, that was uh. It was very helpful, and we're using that as our as our guide and the template. Uh, we've measured the building. We know what we can do to the building and add on. So. This is just an overview. I'll go through this quickly. This is an informal presentation. No. No attorneys. This is just uh, just what we're trying to achieve. Um, so the. The site is at the corner of Main and Canal approximately one mile. From uh Winchester Center. Um. And uh, about an eight to twelve minute walk according to Google, uh, Google Earth I did today. Um, this is the site again. Canal is on the on the left side, the main street on the bottom. There's a, the existing building is multi-unit. I think there's it's, I'm not sure how many people live in the building, uh, but it's a, there's the restaurant on the ground floor. And several apartments um scattered throughout the upper levels. Um. The right side is paved. There is no stormwater management system in place, and it's. The front is this. Grass, but the the rest of the site is paved. Couple of images of the existing, the way the the structure sits today, and and again, that. Photo that we were provided with, it's which was very helpful. We we thought there may have been more ornamentation. Um, but we, you know, this this photo that a lot of this is still there. It's underneath, um, so we're hoping to. Uh, uncover it, restore what we can. If not, we will replicate replicate. Um. So the, again, the existing and uh. And um, the original, if not the original, it was certainly uh, you know, before it was covered up. So our proposal is to um. As I mentioned, uh. Pick up. The existing structure, the foundation is in poor condition. Um. Originally, we were looking to do a small restaurant, a small mixed use building, but. It just wasn't feasible with all the the trash concerns, fire separations. Uh, the restaurant just was too small, so I think just uh, we've received feedback and. Just um. It's a, it's a complete residential structure, and so we would actually, as we move it closer to the street, we would get a little bit lower to the. Around, we would lower the foundation. Uh, we would have a small service basement under the structure, but the um. This would be a. The the two shaded areas on the right side were actually coming to within five feet on the canal side and five feet on the main street side, but. There was still a pretty good buffer with the sidewalk and the uh. And the landscaping area where my where my mouse is. Um. Like the colored area, the gray is the existing structure. There's a little addition that may not. Make it. Um, it's, it was poorly construction, fully constructed, but we'll, we'll have to see about that as we progress, but uh. There was an addition added on. It's in poor condition, but the structure itself is in excellent condition, easily um moved. Um. So a new residential entrance with an elevator with uh, the proposal is for fifteen units, and the mix is. We have eight one bedroom units, three two bedroom units, and four studios um within this building, and it's a, the lot size. Allows for uh. The zoning allows for thirteen thousand two hundred square feet, and I'm rounding these numbers off. Thirteen thousand two hundred square feet of uh FAR. Our proposal is in excess of that, so it's one point five seven sixteen thousand eight sixty one, so we would seek relief on that. The garage, the majority of the cars would be housed in a garage. Um. As you can see, that we would enter off a canal, there would be a no right turn sign, and everybody would turn onto uh canal going towards Main Street. We have two surface parking spaces and then eight garage spaces. Um. You see in the elevator, the two egress stairs, and then two residential units on the ground floor. I'm going to skip that one for a second. So this is just a blow up. I should have presented this uh first, but the. Bike storage would be would be a big part of it, a big part of the development. We have general storage, but also there would be bike storage with the each parking space. Um, just typical, you know, it's not a typical floor plan, but this is the uh, the existing building. A little piece of it would be carved out for a stair, but uh, two residential units per floor in the existing. And then this is just a unit mix, um, the mix of ones, twos, and studios. As I mentioned, so a good portion of this is addition, which I'll show you uh in elevation, but the plan. Gives you a sense where. You know, the flat elevation doesn't show that there is some pretty strong relief from the existing uh structure, which will be pronounced. Um. This is the. Third floor slash attic, so there's some live valleys that we're introducing to try uh to help break up the um, the massing of the third level. And now I'll go back to that. So this is a. A colored version, so you know, the the existing structure would be. Again, restored, but we would lower it. We would have a a brick foundation. Um. That would uh, but we need to provide handicap access to to our in the addition, so the addition would be at grade level, and this would be raised up approximately eighteen inches. Um, we're introducing some of the archtop windows in the addition, um, just to uh. Bring clues from the original, um, and also these gables, but this is a, this is a pretty good uh relief here. The. The existing is much forward. Uh, the addition is further back. Um. We have. Again, all residential, so um, the window is a more residential scale. Um, we're taking clues from the original um design on that as well. Um. We don't have all the elevations drawn. This is just a a concept for the front. Um, we're hoping that. You know, after some feedback, we'll uh develop the renderings and um. And the rest of the exterior views in a little more detail, maybe some sections, but uh. There is uh, you know, we were able to get into the building. That was the last uh directive that we had was to get in, see if it was feasible, and it's definitely feasible to to pick this up and move it. It's in great shape. Um, the tower. You know, we're, we're hoping to use that tower as a little, a little bedroom. Um, so that would be a uh kind of a cool little space. That would, one of the units would have access to that bedroom. So that's just a brief description. You know, what we're, what we're trying to achieve, I guess the the big takeaway is fifteen units, ten parking spaces, but um. You know, a mile, it's on the the bus route, and it's a mile from. Uh, from the train station. Um, we're. And more and more projects that we work on, there's less and less cars, and the the we, we provide parking spaces, and we find that they're empty. The building that I'm in. Is uh, it's in downtown Dedham, and all day that garage is empty, and we have approximately twelve thousand square feet of commercial on the first floor. It's just one of the dynamics of uh. Of way people live today. It's less, less vehicles, and uh, so that's my. Presentation, and I'm. Happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I I want to start off with just a couple of comments. So this is. So one of these units would be, um, so we have an inclusive um. Inclusive housing um condition in the GBDs and the general business district, so this would follow. So one of the units would be affordable. Um, and so that's part of it. The other one is that you are looking for. A waiver on FAR. And a waiver on parking.
That's correct.
Okay, and are are those the only two waivers you're looking at?
That's, that's it. As of now, we have setbacks and height.
Okay. So um, why doesn't, I'll just open it up to the board. If you want to go around the board, if um.
Um. So can I clarify on the waivers? The this is setback for the side is fifteen feet, but that looks like the building does encroach on it? Is that? Are you going to seek a waiver for the side setback?
You know, as soon as I opened that drawing, you 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 uh, I saw that we are in uh, when we added a spot. We needed to do that to get uh to seek a waiver on that right side. It was the uh rear setback uh that we're maintaining. It's. We will need a waiver on that setback. You're correct. Thank you.
Okay, and then um, so we don't have the benefit of a planner. So what is the um, I'm sorry, I don't know the uh parking ratio that is required in this area?
I think it's two spots per unit.
Two per unit? Okay, so there will be a waiver for parking. And um, FAR and set that size.
Correct.
And then also for inclusionary housing, what is the percentage here?
It would be ten percent.
Ten percent. And it's, it only yields one here? Is that right?
Yeah, you got, you can, you, I believe you round up if you're greater than a half. But here you're at fourteen units, so it's, it would be. One point four, so it would be one unit.
And are we able to determine which one would be um part of that? Can we determine whether it's a one bedroom or two bedrooms, uh, for studio?
Um, I, have you guys thought about that?
We we haven't. It would not be a studio for sure. Um. It, we have. Not thought of that, but that's something we can come back at the at our next meeting and um. I think the the predominant, the predominant number of units is the one bedroom, so that would make the most sense. Uh, we are fifteen. So fifteen may round up to two. That might be something that the housing authority might, uh, we may need two, and maybe that's a studio and a one or or the two. Um. So I would think, I I thought we had two um.
I I'm, it was my mistake. I thought you had fourteen units and you have fifteen. So yes, it is two. My apologies.
Okay, and then um. Ooh. Um, i- is it a rental or a condo?
This is a rental.
Thank you. Um, I can continue with my questions that or my comments, if that's okay.
Well, can we, can we see if someone else wants to jump in and then come back to you?
Sure.
Uh, Nick, Carrie.
Um, so I, so I guess we're, we're asking for the the waivers that have been specified, the far, the parking, the setback. And. I guess in, and this is something that you mentioned, but I just wanted to um. Re- reiterate that the the quid pro quo with that you would agree to in exchange for that would be restoration of the original structure. Correct. Um, and. It would be helpful also to have a a preservation architect, a higher peer review. Someone like Wendy Frontiero or Lynn Spencer to kind of consult on the uh. The final designs. Um. And I, one thing that I noticed about the layout that I've been kind of. Looking at, we've seen a couple of these. Uh, and in terms of streetscape. I'm wondering why, or i- is it possible to have the main street front of the building? Be parallel to the street and and kind of square to the street. Um, as opposed to. Kind of at at an angle. Um. And. I I guess uh, the reason I bring that up is that um. It 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 kind of helps to define. The street uh in relationship to the building. Um. And I I wasn't sure. That was something that was uh, that that was um. I I guess. Difficult to do. Um. But I'm just, I'm just wondering, you know. Uh, when you, when you look at a lot of the historic buildings, they're they're they're. When you, when you look at a lot of the historic buildings, they're, they're, they're kind of square. Presenting to the street and parallel to the, to the the walkway in the, in the main street.
If I may, we. We definitely. The, the difficulty in laying out. This type of projects is the parking, parking is. Getting as many spaces as possible is always the direction. You know, the the geometry of the site just worked better that it was parallel, but. We have a lot of studies and, you know, that's something we can take it back and and look and see if there's, you know, we'd certainly pick up more. Square footage here if we. Parallel with main and maybe it's parallel with main and it's parallel, parallel with canal. It, it could become more bike storage here, for instance, and I think that's a bike storage or tenant storage or. Something that's a little bit more, maybe there's a more of a. A lively use, maybe there's a porch area at the ground level and the upper level can be filled in, so that's something we can definitely look at.
Right, and then I guess my other comment is. I, I feel for the tenants and it, you know, is there any way to squeeze in additional parking?
I think this is the, this is the maximum number, I think that at our last meeting, we were able to get one more in and. Now, this is, this is it. You know, I, I'm been accused that some other towns is, you know, it's anecdotal, but it's. We've done so many of these buildings and a lot of smaller projects like this, we have done large ones, but smaller ones are really the, the. In, in, obviously, location is dependent, we have one in Franklin, Mass, same size. And the parking is a little more critical because there is no. T station there and there's no, there's no transportation, but when you get these. Frankly, the, the people that want this, a lot of people don't have cars and there's a car share system that, that you can work with. There's companies that. That will provide a car that's, you know, not just the zipcar, but there's other companies that are doing that and providing a vehicle in the, in the. Space and so those are things that are opportunities.
I certainly. I'm sorry, Mike, I certainly would entertain. Providing incorporated into the leases, Charlie cards and. A zipcar as often as possible on site. Maybe even a dedicated parking spot for one, if that makes any sense for the tenant mix. But I certainly want to incorporate convenience and. You know, efficiencies as it relates to parking. And being able to get from the building to the center of town. But I'm confident within the unit matrix that Mike has developed. We will be able to make this work. And. You know. With any luck, our next project, we can maybe borrow some parking on the next site. I wouldn't, I wouldn't lean on that, I would lean on the first portion of what I said. Charlie cards, zipcar, proximity to the center of town and the unit matrix that, that, that Mike has developed. It's, you know, studios and ones make up the majority of the building.
I'm excited that you're gonna restore the, the additional structure and it's being incorporated. I think the drawings are, are, are encouraging, Mike, I think. I think it, it looks really, it looks nice.
Thank you.
So I'm, I'm excited too, I think he's done a great job as he always does and. I'm becoming a big fan of. Being able to incorporate, you know. Some renovations here of the resource and keeping them and trying to maintain some architectural. Integrity in the neighborhood.
You know, it would be helpful to get a preservation architect involved, you know, when, when we get down to the final designs. I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, I, I had to move this along, but we do, we have one, one resident who wishes to speak, but I want to get to Carrie and Sally. Carrie, did you have some comments you want us to make?
Not, not many, it looks like the trees that you have on your, on your drawing are planted on your property or those street trees.
They would be on our property.
That's great, and then are there internal features for the, for the historic piece that are being preserved? Or is it mostly gonna be the external architecture and then the inside, like is that one unit or it's, it looks like it's a unit per floor?
There's, there's two units per floor, there's, there's nothing inside, it's completely.
Inside would be brand new.
The unit, the only thing that's cool is the, the turret, the turret is gonna be fun to utilize as a bedroom, that would be the. It's, it's a fun spot up there.
Yeah, yeah, that's a cool feature, I'll let Sally ask her questions, thank you.
Thank you.
So, let's see. I, I. My three points, I think, first of all, I think having a really gracious street front is helpful to this project. And I don't necessarily agree with Nick that having it not parallel to Main Street. Doesn't help create a street front, but I do think that, that somewhat triangular space that the footprint creates. Has a lot of potential. And in terms of sidewalks or not sidewalks, excuse me, benches. Just some way of providing a place for the residents while they're waiting for a bus, if there's a bus stop right there, that would be a good thing to know. But also just a place that says this is a gracious entry to a nice building. And I say, I like the architecture, I, I encourage you to keep exploring it. That photograph that I found for you, I don't think that's the only photograph that we have of that building and Ellen Knight. At the library in the archives department can be helpful to you in that regard, I hope. And because you, you wanted, your commitment to doing historic, not restoration, but. Historically accurate renovation, I guess you would say, of the exterior is commendable, I'm very happy that you're doing that. And I like the treatment of the first floor of the parking garage. That it's not obvious from walkers, pedestrians walking by, cars driving by, that it's a parking garage level right there. I'm, I'm grateful that you would employ that, you know, design. So what else did I have? Oh, I do think you need at least one electric car charging station.
We will, there'll probably be two by the time this get, if it gets permitted, we may need, we actually may need three.
You might, that's exactly right, and.
All for that, by the way, I'm very comfortable with that.
That's great, and the other thing is street trees, Carrie started to talk about that. There is a great need for street trees in this part of Winchester. And so going down Canal Street, for instance, you could begin what will eventually be. A tree lined street by adding trees along the Canal Street side of the property. And depending on the space, adding trees on the main street side too, in the public realm. All of that would be very helpful to Winchester's long term livability.
We certainly would consider that, any, any landscape architecture of any quality are, are plus.
Okay, that's good to know, and I guess most of my other questions were answered. By the, or I agree with the points that were made. Oh, I know what I wanted to say about the setback. So. If you didn't ask for that extra parking space, you wouldn't need to ask for the waiver. So to me, it comes down to what is the impact on the immediate a butter? So I would want to know what their view of that was and balance that against the benefit to the town. Or its deviation from our current standards or whatever. So that's my, yeah, now I see it's a parking lot or driveway. Well, I still think it would be good to hear from them, just so, whatever. But I understand the need for more parking and, and you've done as much as you can and I agree with your comments about encouraging less cars and. That's the direction anyway, so, good, I like it.
You know, the, the obvious big change here, everybody, is instead of cars coming in, going from the front. They're all coming in, going from canal, and as Mike suggested, we would seek the ability to put a no. Coming out of the parking area on canal, no right turn onto canal, only a left turn. Leading up short distance to main.
Right.
And so. We feel like that's the most effective and efficient and attractive use of the parking. But we're here to listen as well.
Does anyone know what that huge parking lot is across the street in this, in this image?
That is nine fifty five main.
Okay. That's the medical building, okay.
Okay, so we, we, we have.
Well, there's also one right behind, right below Hill Street, that's, it's not nine fifty five, it's just, it looks like a railroad.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's. That is.
That's behind Andrea's Pizza.
Yeah, that's all, there's a, yeah, that's, that's on the old. Woburn Loop Railroad line.
I think, Nick, that it's privately owned parking that people pay to park in.
Right, right.
I don't know for sure, I think that's what it is. It's part of the Woburn Loop rail line.
Yeah, so we have one, one resident who wishes to speak, I know, E Ching, you had a couple more questions. So why don't I, why don't I let the resident speak? Hank, I am going to ask you to unmute. Hold on one second while I get this done right, so. Okay, you should be able to unmute yourself. There you go, thank you.
So, can everyone hear me okay? Yes, thank you for letting me speaking, so, so I, I am a barter just to. To house, two houses at next to nine ten main street on seventeen Canal Street. And I think, I want to thank Anthony and also Mike to propose and. I think for, for our kind of residential opinion or kind of near a barter. We also appreciated the consideration to keep that historical structure. I think some of my question really related to the parking space. So essentially, if you look at the Canal Street neighborhood, pretty much every household might have two cars. And also keep in mind, in winter time, I think you don't have. You don't allow to park, street parking, so essentially in winter time. If you to have fifteen unit, I think ten spot might be a concern to the neighborhood. Because essentially you don't really have any overpro parking, while in winter time you do have. Parking ban in winter time. And I think my understanding also for this type of building. Is considered to be a garden apartment, so it's not a mixed use, mixed use building. So I think for the current, I know I, we don't have a planner here. But I think my understanding with zoning by law, I think it do require for sixty percent open space. I don't think the current proposal has sixty percent of open space to the design. So I think that's another kind of consideration or concern that I commonly have. So I, I think other than that, all other question have been addressed by either Mike or Anthony, so. I, I think that's my two question and concerns.
Uh, thank you, is that, can you address the, the open space percentage that you have?
I, I just wrote a note down, I, I'll provide that information at the next, I do, I do not have that summary review.
One thing I encourage you to do is to read the definitions of open space, green space. And there's one other sort of implicated definition. That creates, oh, I guess it's hardscape? Just read the definitions and really understand, because I think one of them is more inclusive than the others.
So there are no requirements for green space or hardscape in the G B D. Only requirement is for opens, open area.
Okay.
So there's a.
Can include unpaved walkways, landscape areas, woodlands, wetlands and buffer zones as defined under wetlands protection. It can, they, impervious surfaces shall not be considered. Impervious surfaces, parking areas and impervious vehicular access facilities shall not be considered in calculating open space.
This is, this is open area. This is essentially the amount of the lot which is open to the sky. So.
I think there's a word for it, okay, well, all right, I'll.
Yeah, I think this is one where you just gotta measure it and, and see whether you get to that.
Good, okay.
So let me, let me jump right back to E Ching.
Yeah, um, could we go to the site plan, please? I, my, a couple of comments. I do remember in architecture school, my housing studio, that parking does determine. The dimensions of, of the, the unit spaces and it was fascinating how much cars. And the structure of parking determines the, the building shape. So I, I, I'd also appreciate the, the preservation. I think that's, that is, that is one of the goals of our master plan and, and in this, it, it looks. It, it's really lovely that you guys are centering it and, and working around it. The. The, the placement of this building, the historic building in the corner. I think, you know, we, we've been looking at the C B D and really focusing on the corner and making sure that they, they do have some kind of livelihood to it. And I think a historic building at the corner here does make sense in it, to, to highlight it. I'm just, one point is that the tree right in front, I think rather than a tree, perhaps some sort of lower landscape to highlight. That particular structure would be a nice thing, and then. The entrance with the indent here and, and kind of offsetting from the street, I agree, it does make a little bit more gracious and. Kind of a, a gathering space possibly for the, for the unit owners and I, I think that that could be, like Sally said. Could be enhanced and, and lovely, and I also do appreciate the drive towards. Your car development and I know it's such a, such a strange thing for our town. And, and such a different way of life that we, our buildings have not introduced and, and yet I do. I do believe that with more infrastructural. Investments that that, that is where a lot of the new, new generation is heading, is a dependence not on the automobile. And I, I, I appreciate the amenities, you know, Charlie car and, and zipcar. And perhaps, you know, hosting a city bike wrap here might be, you know, a, a really lovely thing and I know that.
That's a really good idea.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
For the site plans in the, in the coming drawings, I would really appreciate some of the. Budding buildings just to, just to see location and scale. And I, if we could go to the elevation in particular, I think that. The, I think it's the next one, yes. What the details, I feel like the historic structure, it, it's, it's loveliness comes from the, you know, the, the details around the windows and, and things. And you think that underneath the vinyl, there'll be that, right, and that would be all restored and I like that, but. To the right here, this, this, this like mimicking of the gable roof. Here mimicking the original, I wonder if it, and I, I want to see maybe renderings in perspective more, but. If it's a little bit too similar and it sort of distracts from the original building itself and that's just, you know, I'm, I'm sure that could be massaged so that it isn't. Either in color or whatever, is, is not mimicking too much, I understand the like repetitiveness to bring a. You know, solidify the design, but when it looks too similar to the, to the original, I feel like it. Takes away from the original some.
If I may, I just, I think the, the. The rendering is really going to show that. The different planes and how that existing building, you'll be seeing the side of it, I. I, I agree, that's one of those things, like do we, do we mimic, do we take clues from it? Or do we go the other way? And we certainly spent a lot of time looking at different options and. And I think having a peer review might be an interesting, getting somebody else's opinion would be. You know, certainly up for that, and one big thing is. Um, you know, certainly up for that. And one big thing is. Architects should never draw landscape drawings and we do just for, you know, we're, we're, I'm the worst landscape architect. And I work with a dozen great landscape architects and somebody will do a really great plan for us at some point.
Great. And one, one last point I want to emphasize is that our town really, really needs, um. To increase our self society housing index. And so, you know, with a inclusionary index of ten percent, it's two, two units with a, a. In, to be included in, in the count of the F A R, where the entire building would be four units, right? It, it's a twenty-five percent. Um, of this, so I, you know, it, the, that. Is such of such import to us as we build along, um, Main Street. I, I hope that that would be a consideration here.
As a rental property, uh, I believe the town will get credit for all fifteen units, correct?
That's a huge deal to us.
I did not know. I thought that if you did ten percent of the units were affordable in a rental building, then. All the units are credited for S H I.
No, it's twenty-five. And we actually have John Serbeer here who could inform us on that. Um, but I, I don't, I want to get a couple of quick comments then. And, uh, so one of the things I want to say is. Um, I may be misheard, um, but Ellen Knight is at Town Hall, as she's our archivist at a Town Hall. Um, I think I heard that she was.
I did say it wrong. She's not at the library. Thank you, dear. Thank you very much.
The other thing is that, so I'm pretty sure the Z B A will be requesting, uh, uh, um, fifty-three G. Um, architectural peer review, just so you, you know, that'll probably be coming down the pike. Um. Are you, what sort of, um, sustainable construction are you looking at? Are, are you, are you going to try to get to one of the leads levels? Um, do you, do you have an idea of where you're going?
I, I can say that the, the property, the project in Lexington, we, um. It's not lead certified, but it's lead certifiable. It's so easy to get to silver. Um, silver just because of the location and the way we build our buildings today. Uh, this will be an all-electric building by the time this is permitted, uh, so. You know, we will have solar panels on the roof for common areas, uh, it, there's so many things that start to, uh. Uh. You know, it, I just don't know if we can afford to get it lead certified, uh, but it could be certifiable. I've, I've done the paperwork. We've, we have a consultant that we work with who helps us. Um, but it's, you know, the, the Lexington project, I keep using that as an example because it's a, it's a similar project. And that's how we treated that problem.
I'm, I'm gonna take a clue from fellow board member Carrie Leighton and suggest that you reach out to the town sustainability director, Ken Pruitt. Um, and, and he might be able to provide some input. I know that you have your, your expertise and he has his expertise. Maybe, maybe you can have a discussion about what's possible there. Um, the other thing is that, um, I, I, I do like the. That little extra space in front of the entrance. Um, I, I noticed that the original house was actually tilted. The original house seems to be, um, parallel to Canal Street, the side facing, so, um. If you go back, yeah, so. It's kind of, you're, it seems like you're kind of follow, you, you're just moving it, you're not rotating it, so. And I, I kind of like that extra space at the front entrance because I could see that as a little garden. I, one of the other things I want to ask, and I know you don't have your landscaping is, um, to make sure you have native plants, um, drought, drought, um.
Right.
Drought, uh. That's what I'm looking for, resistant plants, things like that. Um, so I can, I could see a really wonderful little garden up front where people could sit and the bus stop is actually right across Canal Street. Just so you know, it's, 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 or it used to be up there. I don't know if they're gonna move it.
Um, yeah. I, I hear you, you know, sun-loving plants, beach grasses, boxwoods. Uh, Japanese, uh, willows that, that thrive on the sun, beautiful plants that'll add to the garden. Yeah, scape that will flourish in the sun are, would, would be our goal. Um, sorry to interrupt.
No, that's fine. I'm glad, I, 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 I love, I love plants around. I think it just makes it so much more human. We do have.
I do, I do too. We, we, we do as well.
I just wanted to add one thing. Mike, I, I just wanted to add that I do like your, your efforts to, to duplicate historic details in the rest of the building and the. The, the curved windows in the top kind of, kind of drawing from that era. I think really adds a lot, uh, to the, to the whole project. Feel of it.
And, and one of the things I wanted to mention before I forget is, you know, if we can get the relief on the parking. We'll, we'll do whatever we can to accommodate the tenants' needs for transportation. Uh, you know, this is an expensive acquisition. It's a very expensive move. It's a, it, it's more expensive than building new as, if we were to knock it down. Um, so we, we need to get the units despite having the re, you know, the, the relief on the parking, but. You know, we could do things such as a shared, shared car or maybe. The L L C that owns the building purchases an electric car that numerous tenants share and. Charlie cars and things of that sort. I'm willing to get creative, but we have to keep it. To a maximum number of units to make this work.
A question, the neighbor mentioned the snow plan when, when the, um, parking's not allowed on the streets. Do people use nine fifty-five Main? Does anyone know what the rules are there? They're kind of diagonal from you. That's.
I, I have no idea. All I know is though that, that place is packed.
Yeah, I mean overnight. It's, it's, I, I, I think it's privately owned, so I'm imagining it's not an option, but that's like the closest.
Yeah, and they're all condominiums to get consensus on, on thirty-seven different owners is gonna be hard.
Right.
I, I would say that, uh, cause I live on Canal Street, just almost across the street from Hank. Um, that most people do have parking onsite, so there isn't a lot of overflow. So we do have some really tight parking. We have some pretty small lots, but people manage to get their cars on the lot, so I don't. I don't know that a lot of people and they, they would have to go and use the, the town parking lots downtown, so that's sort of a. And, and I want to squeeze in, uh, Brian Manter, our assistant town engineer has a comment. Brian.
You, um, I just would like to discuss with the applicant or at least bring to their attention at this stage of their design, requirements for stormwater management. Um, what would trigger that requirement would be an increase of impervious surface of five hundred square feet or more. Over existing conditions. Um, it seems like the site existing does have a fair amount of impervious surface, so you guys are in decent shape there. Um, but based on the proposed, it's, I can't tell, you know. On the back of a nap and calculation if you guys would trigger that requirement.
We, we would, um, trigger it for sure and we would, um. Inform with all stormwater management. That would be a big win. I think every one of these, whenever we do a project like this, the existing sites are usually paved and we're, uh. We're solving a, a neighborhood problem as well, so we would definitely be doing stone water. Even if we're not triggering it, we have to. It's the responsible thing to do.
Okay, that sounds great. I'd love to hear that. Um, perhaps we could have a conversation offline. Um, to talk about some of the nuances of the regulations, um, if you, if you have to go that route, you know, what you'd have to, what you may be required to do. Um, happy to discuss that offline.
Okay, thank you. We have not hired our engineer yet, so that's, uh. That's, you know, the next, one of the next steps is to get this plan, uh, to have a civil engineer design. Design the site.
So I want to, um, and this has been great and, but we're, as usual, the planning board is fifteen minutes over. So I want to wrap this up with a couple of, just, um, what is your time scale for, um, for this project? Do you have an idea when you might go before the Z B A start thinking about getting a permit?
I would hope, I would hope this summer, but. Mike is driving the train.
Yeah, I think right now, based on feedback, you know, we were, we're encouraged. You know, it's always great when everybody likes it. Obviously, there's problems, but every project has a problem that we have to solve, but, um, this was encouraging and. Uh, with, will now, you know, Anthony will have to invest in consultant instead of just, just me. Uh, he needs to get some real, he needs to get some help. Uh, you know, civil, landscape, um. Uh, yeah, I think start to, start to meet with the different departments, engineering for sure, uh, conservation, you know. However, it's administered, you know, this is not my expertise Winchester, design houses in Winchester, you know, um, buildings like this, so. I have a little learning curve. We need an attorney to help us through zoning as well.
Yeah, um, and I would encourage you to meet with the Housing Partnership Board, the Chair John Serbeer is online with us this evening. To talk about the inclusionary housing provisions. And, uh, he, he is, you know, he's the one who interfaces usually with developers and talks about what the requirements are in terms of D H C D. Um, what they require in order to make it, to call it inclusionary. I mean, to call it an affordable unit and I, D H C D is changing their name to some unpronounceable thing, so I think that's. E E H O C L or something like that, but, uh. Anyway, uh, one.
So it's Jones Sevier, which department, Deap?
He's, he's in the Winchester Housing Partnership Board. So, um. You can, I can send you his email offline and you can.
Please do.
Okay. And, uh, one last comment from Sally, you make quick.
I can be quick. Um, I think that when you bring in your landscape architect, it will be really great to have them. Create spaces around the building to the extent that that's possible. Um, and be mindful of the need for a place to put snow. I don't know how much of the lot needs to be. Plowed, because I haven't really seen the site plan of the new, just, oh, there it is, but that's all under structure, right?
That's right. So just the two parking spaces outside and the entrance to the garage.
Right. Okay, and clearing the sidewalk in the winter.
Clearly.
Yes, okay, no, that's great. I'm glad we don't need a huge snow dump area. That's always a concern, but I look forward to seeing your plans evolve. Thank you.
Excellent. Um, thank you very much. Uh, I think this is really exciting. I think this is such a. Uh, an important spot on the, on the, the northern part of North Main Street and, uh. I'm really excited to see this move forward, so thank you.
Well, we wanna, we wanna do the best we can. I feel like it's in some ways the gateway to Northern Main Street. So we're gonna be very mindful of that and do the best we can.
Okay.
I, Deap, I'm really sorry. I also wanted to suggest that they, um, it presents to their, their intentions to the design review committee. Earlier rather than later, and they will help you guide, um. Uh, your execution of, of wanting to really try to preserve the look of the building. That's it.
Yeah.
Right, is any contact there you want me to get in touch with Sally? I'd appreciate the email.
Yeah, and we can, um, Anthony offline, we could go through and, uh, the building department can also lead you through the process of the special. And all the different, uh, boards that get to give their two bits of an, an opinion.
Great.
It's not worth much these days, but anyway, uh, thank you all very much, uh, and we look forward to, uh. Seeing this proceed.
Thank you very much. Sorry about.
Thank you so much. Thanks for the opportunity.
Yep, great. Um, so, uh, let us, uh, move on to the next part of our agenda, which is to talk about. Oh, outreach, outreach, outreach. So, um, let me first, um. Reestablish sharing here so I can see my screen. Second. I don't know why it says I have three desktops. I wish I did have three desktops. Okay, so, um, back to our agenda here. I hope you can all see my screen. So now we're gonna talk about outreach efforts. And at this point, I think Sally mentioned we wanted to talk about scheduling for, um, for the summer. And so this is a really tiny. Let me see if I can make something a little bigger. I'll make this big so you can see it. So, um, here we are, we're June thirteenth. We have a meeting next week on the twentieth. We are going to have form in place. Do a presentation to us. I presume the board would like to take a break before the next one?
Yes.
Um, so, um.
My understanding was that this meeting was supposed to be the form and place meeting.
Yes, and that was.
And, and that's why we scheduled it on the thirteenth.
Yes, that, and I, I apologize, I completely misread what they were doing. Um, and so we, we unfortunately did not get to several topics at our last meeting, so it seemed to. Useful to bring them in that this meeting. Um, but so I, I'm guessing we're not gonna meet on the twenty-seventh, we're not gonna meet on July fourth. Um, so our next meeting would probably be on the eleventh. And then if, um, I, I recognize that, um. People go on vacation occasionally, so, um, how about if we do, if, is there a problem with us doing the eleventh? And then the twenty-fifth, and then, um, what are people's availabilities? If we were to do on a two-week cadence, we would be going back to August eighth and then August twenty-second. Just shout out if any of these.
I mean, I, I think that we're gonna have to just see how it goes from our perspective, but, I mean, if we're away. We'll figure out a way to call in or, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's also one of these things, I think the, um, what are the important things we'll be talking about? Uh, so in the lead up to September, um, we're going to have, um, so Form and Place is working to try to get us. To, um, start doing public outreach on North Main Street and concomitantly, we would, or con, whatever, however we say it. We would do it for, um, North Main Street in September. So they will probably be spending a good deal of time. Um, so what they're gonna start talking about next week are to start to try to get the board to focus on some particular zoning. Numbers or dimensions or some sort of a box that we can present to people, submit choices. So I think we will, you know, if you can't make the meeting, um, I don't know that we'll be having, I mean. We just need a quorum to proceed, um, and, and I know I want everyone there, but we, some things just have to keep moving, so. Um. I think the, the cadence that I'm, if we can, if we try to just do a two-week cadence. So that's the August eighth, August twenty-second. Then we're getting into September fifth. When is Labor Day this year? Does someone know when?
It's always on the first Monday, so it's the fourth.
It's the fourth, and that's actually pretty tight to when people are probably coming back and when do schools have to start?
What day?
Six maybe?
Right, six thirty-seven.
Yeah, six, yeah.
Well, I like the idea of keeping it on a two-week cadence, and if that ends up that there's a meeting on the fifth. I'm okay with that because I have this mental image that, like, the Tuesday after Labor Day is the start of the new year anyway. Um, so it's kind of like, okay, no more practicing. This is serious. Let's get going.
I just want to make sure that since Sally, you and I are, 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 don't have to worry about hoarding. Or not hoarding, hurting kids into schools.
Schools start that Thursday.
Yeah, so it might be kind of hectic to have a meeting on the fifth for all the parents, so maybe we, we move to the twelfth.
That's also a good idea.
So why don't we go September twelfth and the twenty-sixth? And I, I really want people to. Try to, you know, we will, let's try to stick to the schedule. Let's try to be flexible if we need be. I, I appreciate that people are, are going to take vacations, um, but, um, but we do have, we have a. A massive amount of work ahead of us, especially for three A, M B T three A, and I, I, I think that as. We start talking about it later on this evening, I think, I think we'll get a idea of how much work we need to do. To move forward and, uh, it's just gonna. I'm concerned. I mean, let's put it that way. I'm really concerned, so.
So I am concerned too, Deap, um, and I think if we think about the work that's ahead of us in terms of the kinds of tasks that are involved. Or the categories of tasks, um, you know, part of it is analyzing the new zoning that's being proposed to us. To the degree that we understand what we're recommending, um, so that's, you know, wrapping, and everybody on the board has to do this, wrap their head around what is it saying? And the new zoning, that's one thing. Um, and then another thing is, how can we, um, reach more people? And I know that's our nine, that's our eight P M topic, but that right there, do, not just talking about it, but actually doing it. Um, is a huge amount of time and meeting every other week to keep track of that and keep it rolling is important. Um, is a huge amount of time and meeting every other week to keep track of that and keep it rolling is important.
Yeah, so let's, let's dive into that and, and I'm gonna. I'm gonna suggest that we don't have any bandwidth to do any fall town meeting articles except perhaps. For the one which um, fixes the hole in our A D U age. So um, I think I let's let, I would, I would suggest that we flip our eight o'clock and our eight twenty, because I think we can dispense with the eight twenty pretty quickly. And for those who don't recall, um, are, we, we, when we, we put together the A D U bylaw. We um, we had a. The um, A D U, we, we had people with disabilities and then we had um, people over the age of sixty-two. Would fall into these two categories, the two categories we set up for people who could um, take advantage of the A D U bylaw. Um, what we didn't completely understand was that when you turn sixty. You're officially no longer a person with a disability. You are now a senior citizen. And so what that means is that there is a two-year hole. In our bylaw in which a person who could have been living in the house, in the, in the A D U. As a person with a disability, turns sixty and all of a sudden that's no longer legal.
Right.
And they would have to hang out somewhere for two years to come back. And so I think that's a hole that we need to fix.
Right.
Um, we, we don't have, as far as I know, we don't have anyone who is actually um, submitted a permit. Or, or, or uh, requested a permit to build one. But um, I think that's, that's probably, in my mind, that's the most important article, and I think we should do that. And I will stop talking if there are anyone else who has any other articles they wanna think about.
Well, the one that we kind of talked about um, in public is fixing the distance between buildings.
Oh, this is the fifteen-foot thing.
Yes, and I don't know if that's heavy lifting or it's easy to explain and easy to pass. I would think. That people in town meeting would favor that because it gives them more flexibility in terms of how they utilize their site and. Um, all the other rules about open space um, would, and setbacks would continue to prevail. So it should be not heavy lifting and easy to explain and easy to support. Um, which is about what we have the bandwidth for right now.
So I'm not sure I understand the, you, you wanna make uh, you wanna build houses closer to the edge of the lot?
No, 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 it's not the setback, Nick. It's inside the setbacks. The house is sitting inside the setback and there might be a separate structure on the property like a garage.
Oh, oh, okay, the distance.
And, and right now we have rules about how many feet away the garage or the separate structure should be from the main structure.
Okay.
And, and we have had people request um, uh, a special permit to. To get away, not get away with, but to um, to do less than, and we've said in our meetings that we would support reducing that number.
Yeah, I mean, one of, one of the, the side effects of this is that people find that they have to actually connect the second structure to the house to get around this minimum. Distance. So instead of being able to put in a separate structure, they all of a sudden are creating more structure. Um, because they have to fill in in order to turn it into a single structure.
Right. And again, as long as they're not oh, um, stepping over the open space rule or open area rule, whatever it is.
Anyway, um.
So that's the only other one that I would think um, we could possibly manage to bring to town meeting this fall, but we're, remember also that we're gonna be reporting on. Three A.
Yeah.
Because we have to.
So any, um, so I'm, any other comments? That does, is, is, surely takes like, oh, let's call it a straw poll to see if, if there are, if the board thinks that these are worthwhile.
Just, just refresh, what was the age thing with the A D Us?
We uh, the A D U, uh, there are two categories of people who can make use of the A D U. One is a person with a disability and another is a person who's over age sixty-two. Under state law, when you, I believe it's state law, under some law, when you turn age sixty, you are no longer a person with a disability. You are. Call him a senior citizen. And so there is a two-year gap then where if you are living in an A D U as a person with a disability and you turn sixty. You no longer fall into that category and therefore you can no longer live in that A D U until you become sixty-two. So the idea is to reduce the age from sixty-two to sixty, so there isn't a hole.
I'm wondering if i- i- is there a way for the town to consider that the person was designated. As having a disability. And are now not designated. Because of the, the state that they, they will, they, they still. For as far as Winchester is concerned, they, they carry that status so that they don't have to be kicked out of their apartment.
The um, the, the zoning does not allow for that. The zoning has to be modified to allow for that sort of dispensation. Because we rely upon the definition of a person with a disability based on state law. So there is, there's no wiggle room, as it were, in, in our zoning economy.
Cause you're going, you're asking town meeting to make the. You're asking town meeting to make the criteria more liberal.
We're asking, yes, we're asking, and, and to be honest, we had so many people walk up to us and ask why they couldn't lower it to sixty.
Yeah, I think, Nick, what it is, we have to correct a contradiction between our town bylaw and, and the state law. It's not that it's making it more liberal, it's making it um, come, consistent and realistic.
Right, 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 but you're still, you're still lowering the age um.
Yes.
Yeah.
We would be lowering the age to sixty.
That was, that was my question.
Okay, um, so can we have a, a, a quick straw poll here to see if we should, if these are the two we should move forward on? Just uh, to. So for the A D U.
I say yes.
Okay, so for the A D U bylaw, um, Sally says yes, Eching?
Uh, yes, to that and to the ta- um, reduction from fifteen to ten feet, is that right?
I think that's.
Yeah, yeah, it would be whatever the fire department feels is, is okay.
Yeah, I do think that that one is um, will be easier to fight because um. It's within the two buildings, so I don't know, uh, I'm, I'm not sure. I think that the accessory building is. Was the one that really um. Uh, where some of the knows were really about the accessory building, so.
Yeah, I mean, what, what we've seen.
Decreasing the, decreasing the amount will then in, like, increase the number of A D Us built, which is, I mean, I'm a proponent of. But I, I just know that there will be a little bit of struggle there.
Yeah, I, I, what we've often seen is that people want to extend their house. And so they can't because they run into that fifteen-foot. Barrier because they wanna push their back of their house.
Assuming that there is already uh, an existing building, so we can't get closer to that building.
That's what we, yeah, that's.
Now build a new building at the, at the five-foot lot, lot line and close, closer to the house.
I see. So maybe there is some finesse in this in terms of existing versus new structures. So if you have two existing structures and you wanna say expand your house, that if it's within. Ten feet of the garage, you can, that would be ex, uh, uh, okay.
Yeah, I just don't wanna poke the worst nest because.
Well, that's what I'm wondering about. I didn't.
Promise right now that in, in, and just getting it started, I just don't want that discussion to sort of. Tumble into a denial of, you know, all the A D Us kind of a thing, but. I don't think that that will happen, but it's, it's just, it's poking like the most sensitive part about the A D U.
I'm, I'm happy to withdraw my suggestion. I did not anticipate that people would. Uh, see it and I, it's obvious now that you say it, um, in the context of the A D U that they would say it's. It's A D U related and people who were A D U opponents would be opponents of what I think of as a simple updating of our regs. But um, you, you make a good point and I'm happy to take my suggestion off the table.
Well, I, I think, thank you, Eching. I, I had not considered that either. And to be honest, I would like this fall. Town meeting to be as drama-free as possible. Uh, considering that we're gonna have a lot coming up in the fall, in the spring, so. So why don't we just vote on the A D U bylaw? So Sally's a yes, Eching is a yes, Nick?
I don't really wanna vote on this now, but I don't see any reason. I can't think of any.
Oh.
Well, I, I can think of a reason why people might be against it, but I, I, I can't.
Yeah, this is just to say, is the board willing to put resources into moving this forward at town meeting? That's all.
I, 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 I don't see why not, but I don't want to vote on it.
This is a straw poll.
It's a straw poll. It's, Carrie, I just wanna know if, if everyone's in on it, because otherwise we won't do it. That's all.
Yeah, it's worth thinking over. Yep.
Yeah.
It's worth thinking over? That's what you said?
Yes, but I mean, I think putting resources into it, you mean, is it worth sort of like evaluating and making sure this is something we wanna make a run-up for town meeting? So I'm a yes.
Okay, so we will, we will, we will work on the A D U bylaw for town meeting. Um, I would hope that that's a pretty s- easy lift. Um, but that's good and we're, that's the only thing we will consider for town meeting. Okay, so now let's talk about outreach efforts. So um. Two things have happened. Um, so as I sent out email to everyone, I reached out to um, the graphic designer that we worked with in the past. Regan McCain, and uh, she has limited time prior to the end of this month. Um, but has free time uh, in July and August. And then Eching and I um, had a discussion on. Saturday? Yes, and um, what I did there, and let me see if I can bring it up, is. Um, we talked a lot about what would um. What sort of a, what would the goals would be for our public outreach? And how it fits into our overall strategy. So let me see if I can make this big. My open message and new tab. No, I don't want new tab. I need a new window. There we go. Okay, so um. So, and this all feeds into um, how much of a, of a coordinated sort of outreach strategy do we wanna have? And this is something that Sally and I spoke about with um. Michael Wang and uh, John Ruffer from Foreman Place this morning. So um. We have, I think, um, three areas. We have sort of general outreach for the planning board, and this is, I say I, but this is something that Eching. I discussed. So there's sort of three areas. Um, there's general outreach so people know what the planning board does and we. Create a discussion and conversation with town residents. And then we have two very specific projects we're thinking about, which is the M B T A three A and a North Main Street. And so when we took our vote last Tuesday about um, you know, finding someone to do some publicity materials. For, you know, the summer. Um, we didn't go into much detail, and so. One of the thoughts we're wondering about is if you, if you're gonna, if you tie these three sort of areas together. Would it make sense to go with a, a, a single firm or consultant who would be able to help us with all of these? And so it would be a, sort of a coordinated effort rather than a piecemeal effort. Um, and so we, we, we talked a little about just what we would need in the near term and what we might need in the long term. So for the near term, we would need a banner for the booth. Um, and some visual materials to help people understand. So for instance, a large zoning map we could draw on. Um, some maps of the various business districts for the center business district and then the um, G B D two and three going up to North Main Street. Um, someone came up last week with the, with the great idea of laminating copies of the master plan of the, the, the. The action plan as well as the summary. And then we talked about what other sort of handouts would be useful. And so. Um. Eching, you can chime in at any time if I'm not, if I'm not doing, getting the full gist of what you suggested, but the idea was to provide some. Simple handouts, which wouldn't be really heavy on text, because in some sense the text might change. So the text would be sort of the, it would be something eye-catching, which would lead people to. Other resources like on our, our website. So for instance, uh, the, the master plan, so that's what um, Sally. Incorporated this big circular thing, talking about the difference um. Structures of, I say structures, but s- different areas of.
Themes.
Themes, and so use that and put that in. And so then we would have another, a short overview as short as we can. On M B T A, and then this would go into the general purpose, you know, what is the planning board? How does it relate to town government? Who do we work with? What are their roles so that people understand who we are? And then uh, another thing is we were, we talked about how do we ensure that the materials that we have are up to date? And considering our lack of resources, we thought that what might be better would be to. Have briefings for the people who are staffing the booth so that they know what's going on, but not necessarily put it in handouts because. Then we'd have to redo the handouts when it changed. So if you're gonna staff the booth at, at the farmer's market. You wanna know like what's the status of the civico project? What's the status of Washington Swanton? What's happening with this, that, or the other? And so we could have sort of an informal briefing paper for the people who are, who are staffing the booth. But it wouldn't be something we'd hand out because it would be, you know, it would probably be pretty terse. And it would maybe be out of date in five days, so. Um, so that was the thought of our immediate needs. And then for the other three, uh, you'll notice I've got three titles here and I've just completely copy and pasted. The things underneath them. So creating a plan for community engagement and community input. Implementing that plan. So we need not just people who know how to design things, but who actually like fora or things like that, but who actually know how to run them. Um, creating a consistent set of documents and then what's really important, I think, is to get webpages out. We don't have the, it's a lot easier for us to point someone to a webpage through a Q R code or through email. So I think it's, it's, I think it's a fundamental part of this whole process. So the question is. Can we, can we find one group which does all of this in one fell swoop? And I know, Eching, you went online and you found a group which does. Can you describe them, please?
Yeah, they, um, they're urban planners, but they also do sort of branding for towns and they do a lot of the towns around us like, um, they did Woburns. And um, Wellesley, um, so the, those are sort of, you know, some of the signs that you see on their center business districts. You know, on, on the poles and things and, and they're like, you know, placemaking, you know, center town kind of thing. They're, they're very graphic-y. Um, but that's not what we're looking for right now. I think that eventually perhaps when we get to the nitty-gritty of Main Street, that's where we'll go, but I. You know, I've worked at an urban design, urban design, architecture firm where we did do a lot of that for clients and you just, you just take. Um, you, you communicate for them essentially, right? I'm, I'm that, I'm getting that thing out and it could be from graphic design to like, you know, the zoning. Zoning bylaws and, and figuring what that does um, and communicating that to, to their constituents. So, uh, is, so I, I'm thinking that it would be the easiest for, for somebody like that. Who's already working with us in urban design. Namely, um, Forman Place, to see if they did, I, and I didn't have this conversation with them. It's just, I, I just can't be, you had a conversation with them about this, but. You know, with this less than ten thousand dollars or whatever it is that we don't have to um. To uh, get a, a F R Q for. R P, I'm sorry, to, to um, just ask them to, if they could communicate, you know, what we need here and help us do that. Um, and figuring that they, they are very visual people and are able to um, perhaps come up with something. I don't, and I don't know what their response was to you.
Well, I can tell you what the responses, um, but I can also say that in our next budget, we have. I believe five thousand dollars set aside for the town website. And I believe we have another five thousand dollars set aside for um, outreach for three A. So between that and the five thousand this year, if we can sign someone up within the next five weeks, there was about fifteen grand.
It's not five weeks, it's two weeks.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. I can't, I can't do math. But, but the point is, is that if we get some, there is some bundle of money that hopefully would be. But, but the point is, is that if we get some, there is some bundle of money that hopefully would be enough to go us through. So.
Yes.
We spoke with Foreman Place this morning, and so Foreman Place. Where are my notes? This is annoying. Um. Okay, so the Foreman Place works with um. They don't do the graphics in, they're not graphics in, in house. They're, 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 they come at this from, they're, they're coming over from planning from an architectural background. So while they do outreach. You know, so when we do the, the, the North Main Street, they will be, they will um, be with us to do outreach in terms of forums and stuff like that. But they work with a, a community outreach contractor or consultant to do that. So there's, it seems like there are. And, and so there's like, there's a separate graphics design component. There's a community outreach or community dialogue or facilitator person. And then there would be form and place, which would be part of that. So it seems like there are. There's no one stop shop to do this, it seems. Um, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they gave us some names of some people. Um, that they work with, and it seems like we could, um, so there's, there's a person that we're gonna reach out to. Emily Innes, I think I got her name correct.
I think so.
And then there's another person, another person Lauren Hagerty. And I think that is more of a graphic design person. And then I am going to be, I do not know the entire set of services that Reagan McCain will, can provide. So what I'm hoping is the graphic design and the web would be one person cuz that I think goes together.
Yes.
Um, but so we're, we're kind of um. So we have this, I, I think that the idea of having this. Coordinated thing that, that stretches from now through our next, you know, through to the end of our, of our, um, our effort for. The next spring makes sense.
Yes.
I'm concerned that we only have a couple of weeks to get started, and that we don't actually have anyone on board yet. Um, I'm also concerned about who's gonna sit down and create the content. Because there's a lot of work in terms of curating content. And working with the graphic designer to come up with branding and um, just to, you know, stuff like that. And so um. I am running low on time at the moment. And so I would, so I will speak with Reagan McCain tomorrow. Um, if someone else would like to join in, cuz to be honest, this will not get off the ground if we don't have more people joining in on this effort. And, and one of the things I think that you said to me, each thing, was the need to start uh, a three A working group. And I think ever, you know, when I started looking at what Lexington did. And what Arlington did in terms of working forward on three A, there's an awful lot of effort that was required. And so.
The big difference is that these towns have a planning department, not just a planning person who left, but a planning department. And I, I'm encouraged that we have resumes that have come in and that we're meeting next Monday to continue exploring candidates. Um, and in the absence of that, this is just.
We, we have to move forward. We don't have a choice. That's the problem. If we don't do this next spring.
One thing we can do is to, to um, contact some, some of the chairs of any of these boards. Who would be engaged in this now and to ask if anybody might be interested in joining a working group. Because I think this, this takes a lot of effort and, and um, investment from many, many arms of the town.
It does, but it's, I think a lot of people will see this as our responsibility, and I don't.
Sure, I mean, it was like, we could do similar to what we did with ADU and, and, you know, propose it, but it, we need to get a lot of buy-in from people.
Oh, I agree. I agree, but.
We could, we could, we could, we could take some time to brainstorm. What would the composition be and who could we reach out to? And that would be a way to jumpstart the notion of setting up a working group.
I would really like to see this board sign on to saying that each person on this board will, will, will sign up to do that. So we have a rotating membership on the working group. Because this is the board which is going to be communicating this concept to the rest of town in a town meeting. And if this board doesn't have skin in the game, then, you know. I'll be really honest, it's impossible for me to continue with the schedule I have right now doing this. I cannot. Do anything with this, this outreach and the banner for the boots and any of that. It's impossible. I just don't have the time to do it. So if someone else doesn't pick this up, it's not gonna happen. And this is, I'm, I'm really beginning to feel that we need to have. Um. We need to have more people coming up and saying, yes, I will take, I will take ownership of this particular piece. Um, if you don't know what the pieces are, then please speak up, but I. I'm, 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 I'm kind of.
I mean, maybe it's not time for the banner. I mean, we, we, we have to make some hard decisions in terms of what we're able to realistically accomplish. I think, I mean.
Well, I think that there's, there's realistically what we can accomplish, and then there's legislatively what we're required to accomplish. And um, therein lies the rub or whatever the expression is. Because if we don't comply with the three A community, MBTA communities. There's dire financial consequences to the town. And we are the people charged with at least keeping it alive and moving forward until we get a town planner.
Yeah, I mean, I wanna underscore that. We're, it's just because the town is no longer in safe harbor. We lost, we're no longer a housing choice community. We lost out on the ability to get hundreds of thousands of dollars, at least a hundred thousand dollars. In extra grant money from the state in this last round of funding. We just, we're not even in that category.
No, this is the um, the forty B.
Yeah, and so not, and so that's, that's not even, and so if we don't achieve section three A compliance. It's even worse than that. It's really, I mean, so we need to get this passed, or there will be. It's, it's not going to be good. So.
Nick, you need, everybody needs to understand that the, that the, what's at stake is our access to almost all state funding programs.
There's that, but then there's also an exposure to lawsuit.
Yes.
That's right.
The state is more than happy to start taking action. So we don't, you know, so I, it's, it's, you know, I, I. Let me, let me, let me start a little bit of the presentation.
Well, before you do that, DAB, I wanna say that um. I'm, I'm okay calling Emily Innes and setting up a time for her to talk with me and you. Or, and you or and each thing or, or Carrie or Nick, just the two of us to go interview um. Zoom Emily Innes to talk about how she handles community engagement and outreach. Because I agree with you, DAB, that the, 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 the messaging and the graphics and the web pages. Um, are like a graphic and communications consultant task, and I love that each thing. Has, what did you describe it? Somebody who you might be able to help us with that. Um, who you, you, you reference to it as branding municipalities, which. It, that sounds good. It sounds like the right direction that we need to go in. And then the community outreach part is the parallel set of activities. Um, and they need to be coordinated, but it would be great to have. Each thing's person, form and place, and Emily Innes, working as a team to get our message out and help us keep our message focused. And um, understandable. So.
If you wanna do that, that'd be great. I mean.
I can do that. I can do that. But now I wanna say that we have to turn to the discussion of what actually are we gonna do. Um, ourselves. Like you said, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we took a vote last, yeah, I mean, if, if we wanna get a banner for the booths by the end of the month, I don't know if that's possible. I mean, that, that depends upon, you know, I, getting someone who's, you know, the, who will be able to drop what they're doing and do this and get us something. Um, the zoning maps, I think, are um, something we could possibly, I mean. I don't actually know how to start this conversation right now, so anyone who wants to jump in, um, please do. Um, and a little, you know, we've got two weeks to spend this money. We don't have to spend the money.
Well, let me, let me back up, DAB, and ask if, um, if the planning board believes that it is. Um, a productive, timely and sustainable thing for us to have a booth at farmer's markets this summer. I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying it's not in my view, but I wanna hear what everybody thinks about that.
I think it is, but I am nervous that it will just be, you know, one or two people, the same, one and two people manning it the whole entire time. And I, I don't, I don't know that, um. I don't know that that would be that um, conducive to showcasing that we are all in wars. So I think that DAB's point about, you know. That we all have to have skin in the game is, is an important one. And, and is there, is there skin in the game here? I'm not.
I mean, the, the point of the booth is for people to, to get information. It's not for everyone to take turns being there. I mean, it's certainly a nice goal.
Well, I think we give information is by conversation.
We, we represent the people who elected us. I think that we need to appear in public, and so I think it is important that we all there. I mean, the, 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 I don't have, can't find it here, but Lexington had twenty-three fora in a year. In order to get those passed. So we're, we're, I mean, if we. You know, granted Lexington has more. They have a slightly larger population. They have about the same number of units that we require.
They have a planning board of at least, a planning department of at least four people.
I don't disagree. I'm just saying there's a difference. So there's the amount of effort that is required to move this to spring town meeting. There's the amount of resources we have. Now, we're, we're, we're in a really tight spot. But the amount of effort that's required doesn't change based on whether we have a planning department or not.
That's correct. It still has.
So when we look at the other towns and we see what did they do in order to achieve a successful outcome? We have to look at what, we have to say, well, that's how much effort is required. And so I think that, you know. We all have to show up. I mean, obviously, people may have conflicts, but I think it's important that all the planning board members take part in this.
But is the, is, I, I totally agree. We need a regular presence somewhere where the, I mean, we have the meetings, but like, you know, a. A consistent presence. I don't know if the farmer's market is the right. Venue for it. But I, I don't know that I have an alternative suggestion, but I mean, if.
Well, you do have an alternative?
It seems like if we did like a monthly hour at the Jansen and, you know, like something where it was sort of like an informal. Presentation on something where we're, you know, I don't know, some, something that was. Less, you know, the kids are, I don't know. It seems like.
So there's a. The, so I'm sure the Junks would be open to having us there. But I think that, for instance, the, I would claim highly successful. Um. Emerging housing opportunities. Forum, which drew fifty people. Required several months of effort and multiple organizations to get that going.
And how did they, what sort of forums did they choose? Did they dovetail with social, with sort of like less formal? Or did they do formal presentations? Did they do library?
They did, you know, so if you're going to do, so it, it depends upon um. Their, um, I guess, they went for a single presentation because it was time limited. They didn't have much time, so they couldn't do multiple. But the amount of work that went into producing just one was pretty, it was a lot. And so unless we have a consultant who's gonna do that setup for us. You know, just us showing up at the Jenks, I don't think is going to be, I mean.
There, there are more people at the farmer's market that just show up on their own.
And you.
We got, I mean, I'm, it was, it's, you know, this, the. I, I think we get good discussion when there's a table set up. So it's not, it's not, I'm not saying no to the idea. I'm just thinking like, you know. But if we want an engaged group to hear a presentation, or if we wanna sort of build a case, I don't know if people dropping by is gonna be our, our most effective.
I actually really like the idea of us having monthly um, information um, forums of some kind. And, and um, we can talk about location, we can talk about time of day, day of week. Um, and I think that's a key thing, and we could even publish, you know, two or three topics ahead if we can. Um, but I think that that is a great thing in, in, to complements. Um, having a presence at a regular outdoor town event. And amazingly, the farmer's market organization provides us with that. I will just say my experience from doing, I don't know how many, two or three, whatever it was last summer, maybe more. That, that people who don't even know what a planning board is. Are interested in getting answers to questions they didn't even know they had. And these are our neighbors, our residents, our taxpayers, our friends. So I, to me, as five elected officials on one of only a few elected boards in town. This is um, an important activity for the planning board to undertake. Um, to get out to people the messages that DAB talked about, which is what do we do? And, and what do we read, what do, what's sort of, what's within our purview? And what are we working on? And what do we have coming up that it might be fun for them to participate in? And, you know, what are the issues? And then they're gonna have all kinds of ancillary questions that are extremely related to their neighborhood. But they're all relevant across town. Um, it's good for us to hear. So to me, it was, it was entertaining and fun and, and, and extremely informative about what's going on in the minds of our, of our fellow residents. Um, maybe somebody else wouldn't think it would be entertaining and fun. Maybe they don't wanna actually be there to ask quest, to answer questions. Um, and engage with the public. Maybe they can help with setup and cleanup. Um, but I think it has to be an all in effort by the planning board because we will not succeed in spring of twenty-four. If we don't get busy and committed and show a unified and motivated front.
So I am, I am conscious of the time, and Brian Mander's hand is up. Brian, do you want your hand to be up?
Yes, yeah, I just heard um, time about developing zoning maps, and I'll be happy to draft maps. Um, figure that out. And then I think the next logical step would be to have it, like, you know, laminated. But I would figure out that as well. We could work on getting laminated maps.
Yeah, I think that's a good point that with the, with the, the maps and understanding what the, where the batteries are. Um, and I know that's in the works, but when you talk about a united front, I mean, we haven't even seen the maps. And we, we're gonna wanna talk about those, and we're, we're gonna wanna.
Absolutely.
So, you know, I, I think. Yeah, I, I guess we're, we're gonna just push for everything in parallel.
Yeah, so the maps that we're talking about here are the existing maps of just everything we have. And I should note that we now have a new town engineer. So um, we have um. I haven't met him yet, so.
Congratulations, Brian. Not, not that you're him, but that you have in your department.
Yeah, you, you no longer have that empty corner office on the other side.
Yeah, it's great to have him. His name's Matt Schuman. He comes from Watertown. And he used to work for Winchester twenty-ten to twenty-fourteen as assistant town engineer. So he's got a lot of good familiarity.
So let's make it, I would like to start talking about three A in, in the, the topic itself rather than outreach. So um, I think that, why don't we, I think we can move for, I think a banner for the booth is possible. Um, I will talk to Reagan and Sally, if you're gonna take the lead and speak with um.
Innes, Emily Innes.
Innes. Um, we can start moving on, you know, some of this stuff can be done in-house. Um, so I think this can be done, at least, you know, getting it ready to go, we can do in-house. So, but what we'll need is we will need someone who will take ownership of getting that done. And so I, I'm not gonna ask you to put your, your name in the pot right this evening, but somebody has to take ownership of these things so that actually happens.
I can do that.
Okay, thank you. Um, we will also need to get handouts. We need to have someone come up with content.
My concern about that, DAB, is we're, that we're, we're not ready because we haven't had a meeting with the planning board. And it's, it's so difficult to sum. we haven't had a meeting with the planning board and it's, it's so difficult to summarize all this information.
We can have master plan content though. We have, yes, the three A is difficult. But we still need general content on what three A is, how it fits into the affordable housing. Before we even get to the maps, there is, and, and let's start jumping. So those are things that we have, that has to get done or else, well, I mean, we could just stand there and talk, that's fine. But it's, it is really useful to be able to hand someone a piece of paper with something they can take away with them because a lot of people don't have the time to stand and talk.
I think that's key.
Yeah. So let me, let me just dive right into, um, three A. And I, I know the planning board is, you know, I sent you a hundred and forty pages of stuff, but it's stuff that hopefully you've had a chance to read in the past. Uh, I'm going to start with, um, the state website, which is, uh, you know, resources for MBTA communities. And this is really the beginning of where you start exploring all of the different, um, things about it. So I, I'm going to go and through a couple of the slide decks really quickly. Um, they are applicable to Winchester, except there are some slight tweaks because of, um, our size. Um, there's also, um, a community web series, which is on YouTube. And there's quite a number of them, which I think is, they're really good and they're useful. There's sample zoning, which I know the board is, is, is gotten a copy of, which is, um, you know, the key thing that has come up is, um, what are the design, the design recommendations, which are allowable under three A. And then, um, the other question which we haven't really discussed is, um, if you, the three A has a limitation on the amount of affordable, inclusionary zoning you could use. And if we wanted to increase that, then we would have to perform an economic feasibility to show that increasing that amount would not create a, um, an obstacle to development. So, um, let me, so this is the very first document that everyone should see. And these are the actual compliance guidelines. It's full of a lot of these, um, and you don't get all the numbers in here. So, um, this is the big one.
It's, it's not that legally, I mean, it reads actually fairly lucidly. It tells you what is required and what you need to do and what you can't do.
Yeah, but it's, it's, it's written, it's bureaucraties, shall I call it?
Okay, yeah.
But yeah, yeah, no, I mean, it's one of the things that, you know, what does, uh, gross density of fifteen units per acre look like? Um, that's one of the questions a lot of people have. And then there's, you know, um, there are these bits and pieces that, you know, for instance, I think of, you know, there's a bunch of definitions in here. I want to actually, um, skip ahead to the next part, which is, uh-oh, where'd my spreadsheet go?
There it is.
There it is. Um, and, and actually, um, I was going, I don't know what, it's out of order, my apologies. Um. So at the end of this document, and again, I'm skipping, I, I wanted to put together a coherent presentation, but that just didn't happen. There is a, a list of, um, categories and requirements. And, uh, so Winchester's way at the bottom on this list. And so these are the key numbers that we have to keep in mind. And that's everything that we do in terms of our zoning and the areas are all dependent upon these numbers. And to be honest, Winchester has proven to be a real difficult community and not for the reasons you might think. So this is our requirement and, um, I'm going to move to this spreadsheet and give you some very quick overview and then we'll move into hopefully a better description of what this means. So the MBTA says that if you're of a given size, you have to have a certain number of units which are zoned for. So they can be existing units, um, you, they can, if, as long as the underlying zoning allows for building multifamily by right, um, you, you need to create a, a, a zoning district which allows for the production of housing. It cannot compel housing, it just can't restrict it. So our total number of units, which have to be in this district, and the district can be geographically separated at some level, is twelve-hundred-and-twenty. And we have a minimum land area of all of our districts and this, this, this multifamily by right has to be thirty-seven acres. And because you can ignore column F, what I mean, the important thing is that we are required to have fifty percent of the district, which is this whole area, which provides affordable housing or the multifamily by right, has to be within the station area, which is a half mile from the MBTA. So we are, the, the three numbers you have to, you have to recall are twelve-twenty to total number of units that we have to zone for, our minimal land area. Oh, and there's one other number which isn't here, and that's the average density, which is fifteen units per acre. So that's the average density across the entire district. So that means that you can have high-density areas and low-density areas as long as they average out to fifteen units. And so the key takeaways, and I'm not going to be able to show it to you right now, is that we have the capacity already with our existing density. We have the capacity, we have the existing density. The only thing that we've had to do with the zone, with fiddling around with the maps is getting the minimum land area, which is thirty-seven acres. And so let me, um, and again, I apologize, this is a little disjointed because there's just so much information.
So the, the, the definition of, of how we use that land and how it, and what the rules are, is where you go next. Is that right, Dea?
That's what I'm hoping to get to right now. So this is, um, because some of the, these, these are very, um, general sort of, um, overviews from the state and other ones, so they don't speak directly to what Winchester is. So I'm going to go through this quickly, um, because we're short on time. And these are again, these are all in the packet that I sent you, I believe. So the idea of the three A communities is to make it easier to build multifamily housing. And what it does is it says by making it by right, which means you don't have to pull a special permit. That's the only thing that is changes, is you don't have to pull a special permit. It means that it reduces a lot of the barriers. So this is the, oh, this is an old one. We're already past here. This is a timeline. We can skip over this. We've already, we're already off the chart here. Um, but it does note that there are four towns, which as of this year did not submit an action plan. But out of the hundred and seventy-one municipalities, no, I'm sorry. So we'll add one-seventy-one and four. So the incredible majority of, of, of towns are moving towards compliance. So I know a lot of, some people have approached me and said, there are these other towns which aren't, they're just going to take the hit. And I don't think that's a wise way of moving forward personally. So this is again, this language. And, and so let's go into a little. So there are four communities, four types of communities. Rapid transit commuter rail adjacent in small towns. We are a commuter rail because we have two commuter rail stops. We only have to count one. We could count two, but we're going to count one. And each category, and this is the distribution here, you can see that the commuter rail ones are a little further out and the rapid transit. And some of our, our communities are where, so for instance, Lexington doesn't have a commuter rail stop. So one of the interesting, when we look at how Lexington did it, is Lexington didn't have to place it next to a commuter rail stop. They don't have this town center commuter rail like we do. So every community is a little different. Um, so multifamily housing is, and here we go here, is a building with three or more residential units or two or more with more than one resi, so it's essentially.
Two or more buildings on the same lot.
With more than one residential dwelling unit. So what it allows you to do, for instance, is it allows you to build, um, a number of smaller units on a lot, so there's green space in between them. Or it allows you, you know, you can take your choice. So this graphic, which Brian actually presented to us sometime last year, gives you an idea of, you know, you can, you can choose how you want your housing to look like based upon the density that you can achieve. So if you're an area where you can put in high density, then yeah, a three-story building might make sense. But if you're further away, so the key is that we only require an average of fifteen units per square acre across our district. So some places might be lower because it makes sense there. Some places might be higher because it makes sense there. And, and we do have some naturally occurring areas where the density might work. So there are all sorts of different ways of achieving the densities and, and I have a number of different visualizations of density coming up. Um, and so the questions are, you know, what kind of multifamily development? Um, you can have, for instance, you know, a, a unit with only, you know, six or seven, depending upon what the lot side is, or you can have something which is much larger. Here they have what looks like an old factory. Um, who is the zoning for? Because the zoning is centered in near a transit station, uh, we're typically looking at people who probably don't want a car or are able to use public transport, people who are downsizing. These are people that we know exist in our town already. So this is going to provide some very needed housing for people in our town. So let's just, you know, so it's multifamily is a bright. And, and what this doesn't do, for instance, is that when we look at the CBD, we can overlay this multifamily on top of the existing zoning. So it's, it's, it doesn't take away what we have. It adds an extra layer on top. And so if you're not intending to do a multifamily ground floor all the way up, you still have to abide by all of the rest of the zoning. All it does is say, this particular use is allowed and it has these constraints. But the other, any other sort of development, you maintain the existing zoning. So it's not going to change the way the downtown looks. So, um, a minimum gross density of fifteen units per acre, again, across the entire district. Um, housing, you can't have limitations on age or bedroom. This is, this is housing for families, for people who live in our, in our, um, our area. We know that it will probably tend to be a certain populated, a certain demographic, which is going to move into the downtown. Um, again, transit within a half mile. And so this is where we don't need to have fifty acres. We only need thirty-seven. And that's because of the size of, of their formula. So we can skip through this all because, um, there was an extra layer, a formula which goes through here. And, um, so one of the things you want to look at when you think about density is you have to imagine you take all the existing houses on there. You just get rid of them. And so then you calculate the square footage of the lot and then you determine how much is going to fit on there. It doesn't mean you can't use, you know, when we look at existing parcels that have multifamily on it already, they count towards our total. So, you know, if we were to say, look at, um, the Civicco project, that will count towards our, our, our total, even though it will not have been done underneath this, this, um, it, it will fall under the multifamily by right. So there's, it's, it's sort of this, um, it's, it's an exercise in terms of looking at what could be built, what's existing, and then there's the probability that things might change. So for instance, you know, we can, the Civicco is going to go down on town land. It's going to be multifamily. We're zoning it as multifamily by right, but that building is going to be there for ninety-nine years. So we're never going to see redevelopment. So while we count the units, we also know that that lot will never be redeveloped. Um, it's, it's, and, and so there are, so these are all, all of that stuff is taken into account when you start adding together area. Um, so we're going to get rid of this. Um, one other thing that's important, that we can do, and this is something that is important, that, so we are, the current zoning, we, we got half, you know, fifty percent has to be within a half mile of the center T station. And then where do we put the rest? We need another fifty percent. So we, we need, you know, thirty-seven acres, half of that has to be inside of the half mile, thirty-seven acres. Where else is it? So where are the natural places to go? So there, there is a contiguity requirement in that you can't gerrymander your way out of this. You can't simply take little bits and pieces all across town and add them together. They have to be reasonable sizes. So for instance, if you have multiple geographically isolated locations, you need to have a five-acre minimum size to count. And it turns out, for instance, that Parkview is eight acres or eight-point-seven. And so Parkview itself is a very dense development. It has the necessary number of acres to stand on its own, so we can use Parkview as part of our district. Because it provides the density and it provides the area that we need. And when you look at Parkview, Parkview has three-hundred-some units on eight-point-seven acres. So it's a pretty high density. Um, it's probably, if it ever gets redeveloped, it'll probably get redeveloped to the same density if it gets redeveloped. Apparently, um, it's difficult to build buildings like Parkview because building standards have changed since the sixties. But the point is, that's an existing high-density thing that we can add because it's got five acres. It turns out that there aren't that many other five-acre lots. As a matter of fact, we need to move up north Main Street in order to attain the acreage we need. But again, we have plenty of units. So, um, but, I mean, the key thing is you can't, you, they have to be contiguous at some level and the rules for contiguity are weird, so I won't go into them. Um, this is all based upon GIS mapping, where you get actual little polygons for each of the, of the lots. And you put them down into a big spreadsheet and the spreadsheet does a calculation and you end up with a, a yes. And so our current, we are currently, according to the models that have been run, that hopefully we can get to you very soon, as soon as the maps are fixed, we are compliant. So what are the things that I know there's concern about? You can build these units. Can you apply site review? So you can do site plan review, you can do design review, you just can't do a spec, you can't require a special permit. So the other thing that is different about these, and this is, this is, again, we're talking about as a right zoning, which means you still have to meet all of the standard criteria that go into the zoning bylaws. It's just, you, you, the, the key difference between this zoning and the design considerations, the design review, is that the state wants it to be very clear that you cannot use design guidelines to create obstacles to development. One of the things they're worried about is that a town will decide to use design guidelines and say, well, it doesn't match this, it doesn't match that, you can't develop it. So the rules for design guidelines for the multi-use or the multifamily by right buildings are in a sense stricter because they had, there's not a lot of room for discretion. There are, we can talk about, so one of the things we talked about with, with Forman Place this morning is what does that mean? And so they have a really great sense of, well, you can certainly talk about massing. You can talk about how the streetscape feels. You can talk about setbacks. You can talk about articulation. All of these things that are good design, but they have to be able to be, in a sense, you, you can't use them to reject a project. And when you look at our zoning, you look at our design guidelines, there's a lot of discretion in there. There's a lot of, well, it has to feel this way. It has to add to this character. And there's a lot of discretion in there, which the state will not allow when it comes to these particular developments. So that's a challenge, I think, for us. And I think that's the biggest challenge because again, we meet, we will easily meet all of the other physical constraints. It's the design review and I know the town center is a special place, but we do have to meet the, the, the state requirements for how we do the design review. So, um, one of the things that also is, is, is that we have been very clear when we talk to, um, the people who we're getting the technical assistance from, is that we want to preserve first-floor commercial. And there are a number of ways of doing that. One is, and this is where I'm going to get back to where Winchester is different from the other communities, is that we want to ensure that the first-floor commercial is there and is not, you know, that there will not be first-floor residential in some parts of downtown. We want to maintain that street feel. We want to maintain that, that, that sort of, um, commercial or, you know, the, the, the sense of community, being able to go in and, and mingle and buy, you know, do commerce. And so most other towns, when they do this, they essentially just essentially take a, a box and they drop it over an area and they say, that's it, that's what we're going to do it. But we have. A box and they drop it over an area and they say, that's it, that's what we're going to do it. But we have. Worked with the consultants and Kerry, you were part of this, to go through and identify sections of downtown that we want to retain as. You know, first floor commercial. And so um, there, we've said, we're going to take these, these particular. Commercial districts out of the multifamily by right. Now, there are other ways of achieving that goal, and that is, so for instance, you could provide incentives, you could say. You can build multifamily by right, but if you put in first floor commercial, we'll give you a boost. You could be a density boost, or we could do something. So there are different ways of achieving that, but the the. The most conservative way of doing that is to simply remove those 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 particular parts from the district. And if we want to add them back in, we can, but we know that we have the minimum density in area. Um, and units. So we we starting off with the most conservative thing, and we can always add more area back in. So um, let's, it's already twenty nine thirty, so let's move or twenty one thirty. I've gone through this. Um, this is another great um. There's a lot of information. Um, I I think, and I think I've gone through most of this, I think this is just a duplicate. Again, I think what's most important is people understand what by right me, whoops, it's not doing what I want. By right really doesn't mean we're throwing out the zoning, it just means that you, you don't need a special permit, that's that's. And so um, that's, let me move on to the next one. That's not it. The sample zoning I'll skip over, I, what happened to all of my density? There's this, there's this, density analysis. So one of the things that's a lot of commu, a number of communities have done. Is they've looked at what does this form of density mean? And you know, the thing about Winchester is we, we already have the density required. But you know, when people say, what does thirteen units, what does this density look like? So here's, here's one. Uh, I won't comment on the design standards of this. Yeah, it looks like everyone has a slide out their front door, but. You know, this is thirteen units on point five eight acres. Uh, I think this is a a a lot nicer one. Um, this gives you an idea, this is twenty three units per acre. Um, I could envision some of this maybe on North Main Street. Um, this is, you know, nineteen units, so it's a little less dense, but you see that everyone has a little more green. Well, it's brown. Um, this is a buildup, you know, this is, you know, obviously, you know. So there are, you know, a lot of communities that, so this is, I forget what this is um, from, which which. Um, who is this from? Let me go to the beginning. This is New Bedford has one. Um, this is another one, and these are part of what we, I think we can use when we start talking about our outreach is. Uh, this one is from, uh, I forget where this is from, is there a first page here? Northampton. So this is one from Northampton, which goes through, here's what all the density looks like. Again, they're talking about. Um, these are, this is a very different town. Um, but you know, here's eleven units per acre, that's a little low for what we need, but it goes through. And then there's a really great um, fly through that comes out of, and I will send around this link, I just got this from H and. Mass Housing Partnership. So this actually goes through um, it's not working. It gives you an idea of what density looks like. Um. Oh, and I, the other thing I should note is that we have not, we have not sacrificed percent open space or anything like that. And um, when the consultants for Winchester took a look at what we have, they used the base. Zoning we already have, so we're not going to reduce the amount of open space, we're not going to reduce the amount of green space. We're not going to increase the size of buildings. So they used our existing zoning. So you know, the height in downtown can go up to three, three and a half feet, depending upon where you're at. They use the zoning along North Main Street and the density, and we were able to achieve everything we need within the existing zoning. So we're not going to have to increase building heights to achieve what we need. We don't have to make things more dense. We can, I mean, so Winchester is really lucky because we don't have to do any of this. But this is, you know, this is a um, sort of a moving picture view of different. Types of density, and some of these I think are not appropriate for our town. Um, this is a street level photo for one, to give you a sort of a human sized look. So I think, you know. Allowing people, I think this one actually is, you can move back and forth and see something, but. So there are a lot of tools out there which we can use to to effectively show people what the density is. And certainly when we look at what Forman Place has produced, they have produced, we can look at their density and their buildings, and that gives us an idea. And I'm going to stop soon because I think I have both run out of breath and run out of um. Things to show you. Um. And the last thing is I wanted to talk about, and this is what. What what Lexington did, and I think Sally, you you went and you saw this um. Making the case thing for that chap, was it Chappa or MHP?
It was a Chappa webinar, um, and it's one of a series of three A webinars, which any of us can zoom into. The schedule has been published to us.
Um, I have, um, there are, shoot, where is it? MHP has a YouTube channel.
Ah, great.
If you go to Mass Housing Partnership, they have a YouTube channel. They have um, you know, how do you include affordability? They have a lot of videos.
Okay.
Site plan review. Uh, so. These are all, these have been a a series that was going on for um, many months. And they're all available on their YouTube channel. Um. Let me just move through some more things. Um. There's a housing toolbox from uh, this, I think from MHP. It's not the greatest actual thing, to be honest. It's, there's a lot of redundancy, so a lot of these links are off of the states. I was a little disappointed, there wasn't more. Um, but. You know, the MHP webinars, which are on the YouTube channel, are really useful. Um, and what else?
The one that Nick had a chance to um, stop in on, I want to see the historical buildings.
Yeah, and that was from, that was from MAPC, what was that from?
It was, I think it was MAPC. Um, but anyway, it could, it's it's, so the challenge to me is. There's a lot of information that needs to be absorbed. There's a lot of sources for that information. Um, and just sorting through the different choices of ways to learn about this is challenging. But the most important point of all of this is that we have to zone for. More multifamily housing in specific areas. Uh, under specific geographic constraints, we have to zone for that. We don't have to get it built. We hope it will, the state hopes it will. Like, for instance, Lexington said the reason that they zoned way more than whatever their number of. Was like our number is thirty seven acres and whatever their number was, they went over it like a hundred and ten percent or something. They said, because we really want to achieve this outcome. And the more land we zoned, the better chance we would have of it actually meeting some standard that they set. So. Um, I'm sorry, my point, my point is that Lexington went over and above. Because they were very committed to getting this done. So I think I lost my train of thought, I'm sorry.
No, I I think that's, yeah, I I I I want to um, just say Lexington is a. Is a town we can learn from. I think Arlington is also a town that we can learn from, and I think Eching, you're the one who. Who who brought this link forward. Um, so Arlington, um, they did have a draft map, but they just, they just got their draft map out on the eighth. They probably had it within the planning board a little earlier, but that's one of the benefits of having a planning department is you can do a lot of work without being out in. You know, you can review, you can go through iterations much more quickly with these maps.
Because there's no open meeting law.
There's no open meeting law requirement. So um, they have, um, so they created this big. Um, they had a meeting on June, on on the sixth of it. Six, eight, whatever time that is. Um, that was just a couple of days ago. Um, there, they have, you know, they have a a website set up for this. They have these community meeting visioning kits, which are these, you know, kit in a box sort of standards. Um, they have FAQs and I, you know, the state also has provided FAQs. So you know, there are some standard questions and there are real, real good questions that people ask, and let me see if I can bring some of them up. Um, so uh, I've been accumulating a whole bunch of MBTA stuff. Uh, I can't, so there's um, questions about how does this affect schools? You know, there, there are all these questions that people have, and there are good answers for them. And so it's not like we, you know, we don't have to come up with the numbers, people have actually done that already, so.
Right, we just have to find them and package, it was like you were saying about the the briefing kit.
Yeah, so.
So that's going to be really helpful for us.
Yeah, so there's um, we missed out on additional funding unfortunately, because we just didn't have the resources. Um, but um, so that, you know, I I apologize for the whirlwind. Um, there's an awful lot of information out there. I think that. Um. The 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 bottom line is we are in good shape. And the the zoning, the maps we're going to get hopefully very soon are adjustable. And Winchester has done, like I said, something very different from other communities, and one of the reasons that apparently. Our consultants ran out of money is that we were very particular about saying, we want to keep these areas. Out of the district because of, we want to retain first floor commercial. And so they accommodated that, uh, they accommodated that and that, and we still have sufficient area. I mean, we're in really good shape. Um, so yes, there are tweaks that we can make to the map, and we are going to have to rely, I think, upon. Our engineering department to help us with the GIS work on that. And uh, hopefully, um, Brian has left, so he doesn't hear me pull him in on this. But uh.
So the big work we have, Dea, is on the zoning code itself.
So we, yes, so one of the last things that's coming out of this um, our consultant is they are. Writing a. A draft zoning code which fits in with our existing code. And the idea is that we really are looking at overly districts which retain the existing zoning for everything else. Except for multifamily by right, and those, the only real difference is it's is, you know, it's a by right. Um, we do have to look at design standards, but everything else in the underlying zoning. Still, so we're talking about, again, the green space, the parking, I don't remember parking requirements, I don't remember how it goes, I just, there are too many details for me to remember. Um, but they are working on that and um, and I don't think it'll be. I think it will, it it will fit in well. We do have to add a few new definitions. Um, and some of our definitions are rather odd. For instance, I don't think anyone defines a garden apartment like we do.
Uh, one question, Dea, um, do, is there a a time when we can expect that to come to the planning board? Like, we, we set a whole bunch of meeting dates, I'm wondering if if we.
I I I don't think they will be done by next week. I think.
But it's really close.
It's really close, but it's just, you know, one of the things is that um. There's a, there's, you know, here's, I'll see if I can find the document. Um, the, you know, one of the things we've run into is what does it mean to be an excluded area?
Oh, the definitions thing.
The definitions thing. And so when you look at a map and it says this area is excluded, so you can use certain. You, in order to create contiguity in the zone, in the district, you can use certain. Land which will not be developed upon. But it can be used as contiguity. So there's this definition of excluded, which doesn't quite mean what we think it means, it's a very different. So when, when the maps came out and they showed, there are also areas of, there are sensitive areas which have to deal with wetlands. And it was very confusing, so that when you looked at it, I mean, nobody knew what it meant, so um. I can't find, I I can't think of where I would find the definition of exclusive.
That's exactly the problem I've been having. So we have to, perhaps, maybe we can get. I'll just, maybe you and I, DM, can just come up with. The, the, well, I thought you did that when you stitched together all those documents, that one succinct file that you sent us.
Yes, well, I don't, I'm I'm looking for excluded land.
Keep going, because you're in definitions now.
Yeah, so here's develop a land. Excluded land.
Here it is.
Not possible or practical to construct multi-unit. So you can use these in order to link. So for instance, we can use the town safety bill, the public safety building to link parts of the downtown together.
Um, so excluded means it's not required to be zoned multifamily, but it does count towards contiguity.
I believe that is the case, but again, I I haven't dove into this, and that's one of the reasons our consultants have been talking back and forth with MHP. As to when they tweak the 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 map, and then they say, well. One of the things was, can we use, for instance, the Winchester Housing Authority, existing Winchester Housing Authority. Lots as part of our district, because it turns out there is one on Lake Street.
That's right.
And so it was like, it's an area and it's next to an area which is actually special permit zoned. To have, I don't know what it is, it's more than fifteen units per acre, can we use that? And at first they thought that you couldn't use Winchester housing, or housing authority land or property, but then MHP seems to say, yes, you can. So there is a fluidity about these definitions that is changed.
It's been, one thing, Dea, that you should mention about how they decided that contiguity could be achieved by including that park.
Yeah, so I mean, it sounds, it sounds horrifying, um, but it turns out that, but it's not actually, because um, I mean.
Well, they're not, they're, they're saying it's, it's excluded, but it enables contiguity. That this is the park, which pond.
So for instance, uh, right here, you can see, it pops up where I left last it. So for instance, this area here, and I hope you can see my cursor, this is the Winchester Housing Authority. So this is Palmer Street coming up to the intersection.
Housing authority is closer to Maine.
No, I, no.
No, you're right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so this, this is the Housing Authority property, and I don't know how many units it's got, it's got several. Um, and this is the the Wedge Pond condos. And this is actually, um, I think this is zoned RG six and a half, but it's actually special permitted to have a higher density. And this isn't going anywhere. Um, but we need to, if we want to use this, so this total area here does not encompass, is is less than five acres. So it can't stand on its own as 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 is its own district, but we can connect it through Elliot Park to. The Center Business District. So we're never going to develop Elliot Park, that's part of the excluded land, but that can be used to create a contiguous, at least that's what. Our consultant is getting back from MHP, so it's a. Getting all of this in a, in a, in a, in a understandable, so the technical report when it comes out. Is going to require some serious parsing, and then we need to take that. And to create an a very accessible way to explain it to people. But until the technical report itself is not understandable by us. Um, so I mean.
As long as it's not understandable by us.
So I'm gonna, I'm going, I realize I've gone on far too long, and I apologize. Um, I haven't let any room for questions, so why don't we, I will stop talking and um. I will stop sharing and I will let, you know, the rest of the time is all talk from you folks, not from me. And John Sirbeer.
It's been an interesting uh, introduction i- i- is in a way, um, I mean. Been helpful.
Yeah, it's, it's an awful lot of information and and. The key takeaway is there's a level of technicality that I think most people don't need to care about. And and there is, and it's just gross things, and John is walking away from us because he doesn't want to talk to us anymore. I'm going to see if I can. I don't know what just happened. But yeah, it's, I really, I highly recommend, you you need to go through these documents multiple times to really get the gist. And um, there's a lot of information, there are tens of hours of information out there. And I'm gonna, I know John will probably have something useful to say, because he's been in on these conversations, so I am going to. Make you a co-host, John, and if you wanted to have a comment, let's first see if the board has.
Do we have a timeline and when the map will be ready from the consultants? We don't, right?
Very, very soon. I think we, we just, they just issued, I think, the latest, the hopefully the last revision over the weekend. I haven't, I haven't looked at it, Sally, I think you've looked at it.
I've looked at it um i- in the context of trying to read all the other documents too, to understand definitions and so on. But I did see something about her wanting to hear back from us by tomorrow. So that's kind of.
Oh geez. One of the, one of the issues was the original mapmaker went on maternity leave. And so um they sort of had a a several week gap in terms of the person who could take all of the GIS stuff and turn it into a map. And so they have a new mapmaker who just released the the hopefully flat. So within a couple of weeks, I would hope.
So Dea, not not wanting to violate open meeting law and wanting to deal with this, even though we don't have a salaried employee to help us. I wonder if you and I shouldn't just talk tomorrow and try to figure out which documents we need to review and what are our comments? Because I'm scribbling all over them as much as I can and then get an answer by tomorrow. So that she can get the map to us as soon as possible.
I missed the, I missed the deadline tomorrow. Tomorrow is a big workday for me. Okay. Let's meet, let's meet. I'll have to figure out when.
I don't know either, but so I'm just gonna keep reading and scribbling until um.
Yeah, this is, this would, I again, this is horrible. I mean, the problem is if we we pull in more people, we need to make this a public meeting. And the problem is the stuff is just not understandable yet at some level. So John, did you want to make a quick comment?
Yeah, I I would like to make three very quick comments. Uh first, I wanna, I wanna begin by reiterating what Dea just said. Once you get down into the detail and the weeds, uh this becomes very, very complex. And if you start fooling around with the uh compliance model, uh there's a level of understanding there that requires considerable homework. The challenge for the planning board uh is to present this in a way to town meeting members in a way that is easily understood and you don't get lost in the weeds in there. So I just, that's essentially what Dea just said. I would reiterate that. Uh I have not heard the word political uh in this discussion. And I think it's also important to view this as a political process of getting fifty-one percent of the votes at town meeting. And uh Lexington reiterated that on Monday, uh and they did two things uh that were absolutely essential. Uh the first was they recruited speakers uh to testify, to support. Uh they were people from within town meeting, people outside town meeting, that they, that were highly respected uh that understood this, that had a good message. Uh and so I think one of the things that we collectively have to do uh is to identify a group of people outside the planning board, outside the Housing Partnership Board who are willing to speak in support of this, uh but whatever proposal comes forward, that's not necessarily easy, requires a lot of recruitment, a lot of one-on-one discussions. Uh and the second, a second dimension of this political process is uh engaging, actively engaging the uh state legislative team uh which is I visit four people or five people uh in the Michael Day, Jason Lewis, uh Pat Jalen, Michelle Kokolo. Am I leaving someone out? Uh get them to support this at town meeting. Uh I've already in town day and otherwise, I've had conversations with Jason Day and uh Jason Lewis and Michael Day. Lexington felt that they waited a little bit too long to get the legislative representatives involved. So I think getting them involved early so that they understand this. Both Michael Day and Jason Lewis have been following the three A work very, very closely. Uh so they want to know and understand what Winchester is doing. And so again, I would recommend uh you know, a series of meetings, a series of one-on-one briefings to to the state reps and the state senators uh indicating what Winchester is proposing and making sure they agree with it. So those are my three comments.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, obviously, um if you have any, if you come up with any, yeah.
I um I think that the state has a real big interest in us succeeding. So if if the, i- is is there a main contact that we have with the grants and with with our submissions? Where we can explain our condition, which is that we don't have a page staff, we have open meeting law violations that uh we're working around or trying to figure out not to violate and and we are really, really like you know, right there in in our resources. So you know, is there, I know we missed the deadline, and that's because we are so stretched. Right? You keep getting poor. So like, we need to have some kind of relief from them and or just some kind of closer look. I'm sure one, you know, we are one of the, one of the few, well, I I guess Arlington is having a really hard time with their planning board as well. Or their planning uh department, kind of losing professional people. Um but you know, the the funding was key. And so we need, I, is there a main contact that one of us could could say and and explain the situation to?
I do not know if there is. Um the MHP has not. I can ask Brian, but I think at the time Brian was was working on this, it was mostly just fill in the web form, you know, fill in the the thing that got us through uh December of last year, which we're going to put together the action plan and submit it. I can ask, so the problem, I, you know, I think the.
It's like asking the teacher for an extension to a home.
Yeah, I just don't know which teacher to ask.
Right. So I, I mean, I can, I can try to do some phone calls if if, you know, the board is okay with it.
I think it might, you know, I think maybe starting a conversation with our state reps is might be the first thing to do and say, you know, we are kind of, we're not completely at sea here, you know, we can see land. Uh the boat's not sinking yet, but certainly having them, maybe they can help us because I can get, you know, I do have one person who um so when when our consultants ran out of money for the project, they reached out to someone at MHP who said, yeah, we will finish paying for the rest of this. And I do have that person's name, but I have no idea where they lie in the whole organization. So.
Yeah, no, I can, I can try to do. I mean, I recently have had encounters with Pat Jalen. She's really responsive um with something else, but I, you know, can start there and and figure out if she can point us to resources or.
Yeah, I I don't, you know, I I think you're right. I think the state wants us to succeed. They have certainly tried to give people lots of resources. Um we do have budgets for some resources, so we're not completely at a loss. I think it's the key is we just don't have the personnel.
Right, we don't have somebody to really help us guide it or do the work while two people, you know, can't do it. Or because you guys are doing the main work and I would like to help, but then you you sort of have the uh like the knowledge base that I don't have. Um and I don't, you know, it's it's hard to jump in.
It's hard to jump in until we get this thing public, so we don't violate open meeting law. And that's the other big bugaboo is that just.
It's a tough game. It's stacked against us. Um so yeah, I I can, I can go and see if I can get somewhere.
So Eching, I love it if you would um evolve into being our liaison to our delegation. I mean, obviously with Dea. Um and I just, one of the first questions they're gonna ask is, well, so how are you doing with recruiting your new planner? So whatever day you finally get the meeting or the conversation, you should get an update from the screening committee on that.
Well, we're meeting next, next Monday. So happy Juneteenth. John, was your hand just up for another question or was it?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to Eching. Oh, was Erin McGowan the person that you talked to at MHP?
Me?
Um I think he means me.
Is that MHP staff and CHAPA staff are extraordinarily accessible in terms of providing one-on-one technical assistance and guidance uh in there. And you know, all we have to do is email or it's easier to email. But a combination of email and telephoning. Also, uh uh I, Dea, I didn't recall you saying this, DHCD will uh conduct a preliminary review of the proposed approach. Uh a preliminary and informal review of the proposed approach before this goes to town meeting to make sure that any town uh doesn't bring something to town meeting that then proves not to be satisfactory to DHCD. And so that's a step in the work program, a step in the process, is to uh at some appropriate point obtain that review from DHCD.
I really appreciate that you told us that, and it makes me realize that we need to come up with the timeline of of all the different boards and committees that we want to be sure to talk to um in advance of town meeting, including what you just said, which is great to hear.
So um it's getting, it's 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 getting close to ten. So I suggest that, so we have just looking at action items for what we need to do. So we have um so I know that uh so Sally, you're reaching out to the person that was recommended to us by Forman Place.
Emily Innes, yes.
Uh Eching, you're gonna, you're gonna start thinking about talking to the state reps. I think we're gonna go ahead with um let's try to get a banner out. We're gonna go ahead and see how much of the of the um and I, Eching, did you say you were going to, someone said.
Brian on some of the maps and stuff.
Okay, right. So you work with Brian, and then you get to meet, see, one of the, one of the interesting new um elements is that we do have a new town engineer. And I know that we have worked well with Beth as former town, Beth Rudeva as former town engineer and Brian Manter. But we need to make sure that um we have a good working relationship because we're going to be trying to steal lots of Brian's time, especially when it comes to GIS mapping. So I think that uh I will, I will make a a point of going and meeting our new town engineer and and trying to explain how much time you're going to steal from him.
Well, speaking of Brian, I just don't want us to forget that in the very beginning of this process, Brian Manter and Brian Zekely did this massive deep dive into the compliance model spreadsheet with the GIS coordinates for all the different areas that needed to be considered. And it was a huge job, right, Brian?
Uh yes, uh Sally, thank you. Um it was fun working with Brian on it. Unfortunately, I don't get to work with him on that type of stuff anymore, but uh I it was a great experience. Um and collaborative, his interpretation of the rules and the regs and some of my experience with the GIS, you know, that marriage, I think, worked out pretty well and hopefully um uh the new consultant has data that they can use.
Yeah, well, we'll be coming back to you, Brian, because I think we're gonna have to, if we do tweaks, we're gonna need to generate new maps. So and I want, just so that as we move forward. Um I think we need to start, I I um the idea of a of a MBTA three A working group. Uh maybe you can come up with a catchy name for that, um because that's.
I agree with that as an action item.
So why don't we um move forward and uh I I think that it makes sense, I think, at this early stage that that either Sally and I be on there just because we've had our toe in the water for so long. But I really would love it if we could, if everyone would cycle through that group, because people are going to ask every single one of us what this means, and we need to all of us be able to answer their questions. Um so.
I'm happy to keep working on it. I enjoyed looking at the maps and.
Yeah, so why don't we, why don't we, um let's get together, uh why don't you do this? People can send ideas as to who should be on the working group, think of which other um committees and then send them to me. Just send it to me. Don't CC it to anyone. I think that's safe. And then I will um collate them and then send out a um an invitation.
That'd be great. That's perfect. That's exactly right.
Okay, so we have a meeting in a week, um and we have some action items. Maybe we can make some uh motion on them, and I thank you for your patience. Um this is a lot of information to take in and uh yeah, anyway, uh thank you all. And uh can I get a motion? A move to adjourn.
I have a move to adjourn with thanks to you for doing a really big presentation to us. Thank you for that.
Oh, I appreciate that. I I actually kind of went the easy way. I didn't make one. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, uh roll call though. Nick.
I.
Sally.
I.
Eching.
I.
Carrie.
I.
And I say I as well. Uh thank you once again, as always, to WinCam for broadcasting us out to Winchester residents. Thank you very much to our recording secretary, Nancy Pocari. Thank you, Brian Manter, for sticking with us. Um as usual, you are your insights are are really welcome. We lost John Sirbeer. Um thank you to everyone out in TV land, and we will see you in a week. Bye, everyone.
Record.